All right. Good afternoon and welcome to the November 24th, 2020 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Hurdman is currently absent.
All right. For members of the public who are here to speak in person, we are in the closing stages of our blood drive. They're cleaning it out right now. And so, by the way, just a quick thank you to our Chairwoman, Michelle Steele, for co-hosting that today. If you're here to speak in person, we'll have you come into the chambers. Unless we have too many people, then we'll stagger and hopefully get to the point where we can go back into the commuter room as well. All right, with that, we'll move into current business. Clarification of items on the consent calendar. Any from you, Ms. Dixon? Mr. Muldoon? Ms. Brenner? Mr. Duffield? Mr. Avery? I have none. We'll go into item number two, the update on cities residential refuse and recycling collection program. Staff, go right ahead.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the time to talk a little bit more. As you know, we've been working in our refuge area for some time, about a year, and we've been going through various contracts, commercial, other things. And as of July, we brought you your first look at our residential contracts. Tonight, we're going to be talking more about our residential contract and negotiations and moves we have to make to keep moving forward on those agreements. With us tonight, just so you know, Will O'Neill is our consultant with economics. He's up here and also, I'm sorry, Will O'Toole.
There you go.
O'Toole, I'm sorry, excuse me. Slip on them. Both Irish. And Dean Ruffridge with CRNR is also joining us in the back for questions if we need it. I'm going to turn this over to Deputy Director Micah Martin. He's going to go through the presentation for you, and then we'll take your questions.
All right, thanks, Dave. So we're here tonight to kind of touch base on our residential refuse program. We had a study session with you back in July, and this is kind of a continuation of that. We've made some progress with some of the direction that was given there. So just really quickly to recap, our solid waste management here in the city, we have various areas that we manage refuges under. One of them being our commercial and industrial businesses, also the contracts that govern construction, project demolition, and waste. Also, our city contracts, which cover our beaches, our street containers, and our facilities. And finally, residential households. And that's one of the main subjects here tonight we'll be talking about. So just a quick overview again, this is a familiar slide for you all, but this is a recap of some of the state legislation that's currently in place or that is coming into effect in the next couple of years moving forward. And these all kind of guide us in the direction we need to go with our programs and kind of are the catalysts for a lot of the changes we need to make. Kind of a current snapshot of where we stand today. We have our overall commercial or overall recycling mandate, AB 939. Currently, we're at 62% with that. So we're meeting the diversion requirement, but there's also a program component to this. CalRecycle likes to see that you're not only making your diversion, but you have a fully operational program in place. So in order to get that full operational program, we need to have source separation at the curb. We have a portion of it, but not completely. So you can see the item's not completely done, and that's going to require some modifications to our refuse contract. We have our commercial recycling mandate. We're at 89% diversion on that, and we're doing really well there. We've made a lot of progress in the last year or two. We've updated our municipal code. We've got new franchise hauler agreements in place. And our compliance reporting is really starting to turn the corner on that. We're even at the point now where we're ready to start implementing enforcement as needed. We've hired on some code enforcement staff, and we've got them working directly under our refuse section of the division. And finally, we have commercial organics. There's a goal here of 50%. Right about 45 now, but this is still a new mandate, and we're working our way through that process. We've updated our municipal code. We've got new franchise agreements in place. We're still waiting on the compliance reporting to be coming in, and we're confident as that continues to come in throughout the year and into next year, we're going to be in a good position. And then finally, we have organic recycling. That's required by 2022, SB 1383. So this is really the next big piece of legislation that requires a lot of action on our part. We really need to update our program to be able to accommodate this and get the program in place in time. So this is kind of more of a brief overview of our residential collection. We really want to focus on the blue and green areas there. The blue area being the Newport City contract. And then also the green area, which is Newport Coast, that we inherited through the annexation process. So this is our current can program as it stands today. It's a two-car collection system. As you can see, the can there on the left is a blue lid. It represents a recycling cart that gets processed at a clean MRF. And then we have a black lid can, which is processed at a dirty MRF, and that handles all the other waste that is not considered a recoverable commodity. Currently, we have over 27,000 residential accounts in the city, and 73% of those households are participating in this program. And our dry recyclable diversion rate for this area is at only 45%, or 43%. There's still some work to do there to get that up to the level it needs to be.
Micah, are the clean MRFs still not operating just because of COVID? Or have they gone back operational?
Actually, all the MRFs are back operational again now. They were finally able to complete that process back in October with all the state mandated requirements to social distance and everything else. So they're back to being operational again.
All right.
Yes.
Can I just ask a quick question? Thank you. Micah, just to put some context for edification for our listeners, the dry cycle diversion rate of 43, you just, your last sentence was, "We're not quite where we're supposed to be." What is the number at which we should be?
Well, we need to be over 50%.
When?
In the previous slide.
Now?
Now, yeah.
And?
And the previous slide, you know, showed us that being over 50% overall. So citywide, we're over that threshold. But on this specific program for residential recycling, we're still a little bit under.
How would, as we go forward in this presentation, how would you characterize the city's challenge ahead to comply with current state law and mandates for 2022?
Well, really having the proper program in place. Currently, our contract isn't set up to deploy this level of a program. So there's modifications to the contract that need to happen in order to get us to the level of program deployment that we need to be at.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so knowing of these changes and kind of where we stand with our program, that there's things that need to happen. This is kind of a brief synopsis of some of the things we need to do moving forward to get us into compliance with these mandates. So we need to implement an extensive diversion program to comply with this legislation. We need to maintain 50% or more on our recycling diversion rate. So that means residents must now source separate their green waste and food waste into a new green cart system to comply with these state mandates. So knowing this challenge, we realize that there's going to be some sizable cost increases in order to comply with these diversion rates. And it's going to also opens the opportunity for us to explore options to help offset these increased costs. So some of the other challenges that we're facing or that we're needing to do moving forward, we need to start requiring blue recycling carts for all households. So we're looking at just over 7,000 new carts to complete the program as it stands right now. And then we need to expand to a three-car program, which will allow all households in the city to have a new green organics cart. And just to touch a little bit on this, this is kind of a caveat from the last study session we had. We were originally looking at a two-car, three-car type system. But working with CRNR through this process, they brought it to our attention that they're no longer going to be offering the two-car wet-dry system as it currently stands now. They've been having challenges with that, with getting the proper diversion. The recoverable material, which is a commodity for them, is not meeting the requirements. So they're trying to move away from this two-car system. So knowing that that's not an option for us anymore, we're really kind of in the position where the three-car program is where we need to be. Some of the other areas that we needed to look at was increased automation. We talked about this before. We need to require that all refuse material be placed within the carts for pickup. No more bags or boxes or other material piled around the can or outside the carts. And everything needs to be in the cart to create that efficiency we need for the automation. Two other areas, we wanted to be able to define bulky item collection. Narrow it down to maybe five pickups per household per year as opposed to the unlimited bulky collection that we have under our current system. Another big area we want to ask for is two full-time CRNR staff members for an 18-month period to provide the extensive recycling and organic outreach that would be included in the door-to-door provision and require for contamination monitoring. So this will be to ensure that not only does the program get implemented, but it gets followed by our residents, that they know and understand the program and that they're utilizing it for its intended purpose. And we want to be able to limit the number of free carts, maybe to one 90-gallon cart per household. If you remember from the last study session, there's a lot of households that have multiple cans per house, which generates a lot of extra processing. So we'd like to start working on narrowing that down. And then finally, we want to be able to require a seven-year average collection vehicle age so that we have no vehicles over 10 years old out servicing our routes. And that's important for efficiency, that we have well-maintained, well-functioning equipment out on the street servicing our cans for efficiency and for safety. So this is kind of a picture of what the proposed three-card option could look like. We could have a blue can there on the left. That would be used for clean recyclables that could be processed at the clean MRF, no more dirty MRF processing. We could have a green organics cart in place for yard trimmings and for food scraps. And that could all be processed at an organic processing facility, which could either be compost or anaerobic digestion. And we could even have the option of a smaller green cart for the space-constrained property areas. This is important because they face the challenges of having room for the cart. But also, it's to be noted that a lot of those smaller properties don't generate a lot of green waste or food waste. So it's not necessary for the larger cart, and having the smaller cart could be much more efficient. And then the black trash cart, of course, is for everything else that would go just straight to the landfill. So if the source separation's being done properly, this system would work efficiently and give us what we need. And this would give us the increase in the overall residential diversion rates and also give us the full program implementation.
So, Micah, sorry, go back for a second. So last time we were doing a study session, and I probably should have caught this, at our subcommittee discussions, the concern that the council had was going to three-car systems in certain parts of the city. Because a three-car system requires three trash routes, trash truck routes, which would put more trash trucks into areas of the city. And that includes pretty impacted areas like Babal Island Peninsula and even into the Heights areas and whatnot. And so we had tried to work through the idea of a three-car system in most of the city. And then, you know, a two-car system in some other parts of the city that would have, hopefully have a blend across that would allow for us to meet our compliance requirements. So is what we're talking about today only a three-car system? Is that where we've landed in terms of the ability for us to actually meet the standards? Or is, do we still have a blended option in terms of the discussions we're having with our hauler?
So the discussions we're having with our hauler now, and in conjunction with the state mandates, the three-car system is really where we're ending up. Our hauler no longer wants to process the two-car system. They're moving away from that. It's, in the near future, it will really be no longer an option. So it's kind of put us in a position where the three-car system, not only because that's hard, hauler needs to handle it, but the state mandate is pushing towards a three-car program. And a lot of the other cities in this area have moved to that three-car program because it's the program implementation that the state's looking for.
All right, you're going to probably get some questions, Diane, on this one.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to go back to your earlier comment, just trying to, again, set the context for why we're moving in this direction. On your slides, I guess they're not numbered. It's a 73% of total households participating, and our dry recycle diversion rate is currently 43%. So of those homes, households that do have the recycled, the blue lid recycle cart, do we have data on what the percentage of their compliance is or the diversion rate?
Well, it's that 73% that's getting us to the 43% diversion rate.
But, well, I guess let me back up and ask the original question. Why were some households do not have blue carts? Why is that?
So when we initially implemented this contract, the state mandates weren't as stringent at that point. So recycling carts were more optional than mandatory. But now that we've moved through the legislation changes, since this contract's been implemented, it's becoming more and more mandatory as opposed to optional. So we're at the point now where it is mandatory. So that's one of the catalysts for needing to make the changes in this contract.
So 100% of our households will, this is mandatory as we go forward?
Yeah, CalRecycle wants to see full program implementation. So that would mean every house having that cart.
Because over the years, I mean, I've received many, several questions from residents saying, "How come we're not doing more recycling? I don't have a blue can." If people wanted a blue cart, could they request it? Or do they have to really wait till all this gets underway?
Oh, they can request that now.
Can they? And that would be picked up with their normal trash pickup?
That would be part of the existing contract we have in place, yes.
So that's a good message to communicate, that if you do not have a blue cart, request one, and they could start recycling.
Yeah, that's the way it's working right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sorry, just one quick question before we get to Joy. So when you're talking about full program implementation, requiring everyone to have a blue cart, are we also talking, then, when we get into the organic waste diversion requirements, also requiring everyone to have a green cart?
That's correct.
Okay, sorry, I'm going to dwell on this for just a second because one of the things that we've been trying really hard to do over the last year, and again, I apologize, I didn't catch this when we were having our subcommittee meeting. One of the things that we've been trying really hard over the last year to do is to not do this. I mean, I don't know how to say it other than that, where, you know, we recognize the need to comply with state mandates. You know, there's been a point of contention for many reasons this year, but this is, but we recognize it. And so we're trying to figure out, how did we do that? And one of the, you know, one of the main concerns we've had while we're working through this is the idea of having to do an implementation of three carts across the city. So we've been working really hard to figure out how to get to that two cart. Have we reached the point, and this is a question for William also, have we reached the point where we think, based on the data, based on everything that we've seen, that a two-car blend is just not feasible?
Well, what I can say is, and I'll let William speak to this too, but there's two things we're up against. One of them is the options for processing the material are becoming more and more limited. And that in conjunction with the state legislation moving towards implementing the full program, we've got two things working against us. So it's becoming much more and more challenging. But I'll let William speak further to that.
Yeah, why don't you come on up?
Are we live? Okay. Good afternoon. William O'Toole, I'm the President of Economics, and I'll get to your question. In short, yes, you need to get an organic service to each of your residents. We looked at the two and the three-car option, which is what you referred to earlier and what the group saw in June. Working with the regs, when you look at the requirements for how much material you recover from the organics, there is no system that you can mix organics in with recyclables and trash and get anything out of it except trash. So you're not going to meet the requirements of the law, the regulations, of separating out the organic waste unless you go to a three-car system. And CRNR is also looking at their overall collection and processing system, and they've come to the same conclusion that a two-car system won't work. They won't be able to meet the requirements of the law. And Newport Beach consequently wouldn't be able to meet the requirements of the law.
Okay, all right. We'll go through some more council questions. Ms. Brenner?
As I remember, even if we're forced to have three carts, weren't we talking about the space confined areas having a truck that, only having two trucks, so that one of the trucks was divided and could pick up two different types of refus?
Yeah, that's one of the options that, there's another city in the desert, Retro Mirage, I believe. They have what's called a split-body truck. So the truck can haul two different types of material and collect two different types of material in that one truck. It's a really new kind of concept. There's only one city in Southern California doing it right now. We did look into that option and explored that option with CRNR. It's very expensive, and there's a lot of trepidation centered around it because they've never used it before, and it's a little bit of a concern there. But it is something we have looked at, and it can still be on the table. But when we talk about, and later in the presentation, we're going to kind of talk about cost. And that's a big factor in that.
Okay, and another question is, is there, at some point, do we have to talk about penalties if people don't do this?
Yes, absolutely. So if you, one of the other slides I talked about was asking CRNR to provide the two staff members for the 18-month period. And us as a public works department, we brought on code enforcement staff to help with refuse enforcement. So once this mandate's in place and we've updated our municipal code, we'll be able to start imposing enforcement where education hasn't been successful.
And then, Mr. Avery?
So is that 18-month period just based on experience of how long it's taken other cities to get on board with it from an education standpoint?
Right, that's the average amount of time it takes to get the program fully implemented and on its way to being a successful program. And that could be extended if needed. If we, as we continue to monitor, if there's more to do, we could certainly extend it for longer. But that's kind of the initial period that's recommended.
And I assume if people have more cans, do they expand into those cans? Is there more trash developed? In other words, if you're limited to two cans or three cans, or the cans are smaller, people tend to, just curious, you know, compact and have less waste?
Right, you're in a position where you have to be much more selective about managing your trash. What you're really throwing away, breaking it down, like you mentioned, be much more resourceful with those options.
And so tightening up the policy of having things outside the trashcans. I've noticed recently, well, it's been about a year now, but at least, there's these private small haulers, you know, junk haulers that have started up. There's two or three of them, businesses that are going around and picking up these items. And I really like the idea of sort of this being handled outside of the normal refuse collection.
Right.
Just to kind of, because there's a cost to it. So it makes people more aware, particularly with large bulky items. I know it's a really great service that we offer, but I know some residents are already, you know, doing that. Instead of putting stuff out on the street, they're calling a private hauler.
Right.
In these very relatively small trucks, kind of taking stuff away.
Right, there are other options available for managing that excess refuse, if you will. You know, around the holidays, people generate a lot more trash typically with packaging and everything else. And that's why those bulky item pickups are helpful. It doesn't have to be just for bulky items. You could just have a large amount of trash that doesn't fit in your bin, and you could use that bulky item pickup to help with that. So there are options available other than just the cans to be able to manage that refuse.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Brenner?
I had one other question. What are we going to do when there are people that just don't have any space to put more cans? Or don't, I mean, I can do that in my confined space, but I can do that. I can add extra cans. But there are some places on Babal Island where they don't have room to get a car in their garage, much less trashcans, and there's no physical space for more cans. How, what are we going to do about that?
Well, if we put the program into what's a three-car system, a lot of the households have two to three carts now. So if we put into a three-car system, it's not so much about an increase in the number of carts. It's just better managing the carts that they're currently using. And even with the smaller organics cart, like we mentioned, a smaller-sized cart, like down to like a 35-gallon cart, so it's not real big. So even if they're only using two cans now, the addition of that smaller cart, hopefully, wouldn't be too much of an impact. That's our goal.
That's our hope, Joy. We drive around, and you see a lot of houses have three or four black cans. You would take away a black can and put it in a blue can, and hopefully, they would be moving material out of the black, same kind of refuge volume. So, and there was one thing that we could put a smaller can, too. We were talking about maybe using two, three, 35-gallon cans versus one big can for the space constraint.
Ms. Dixon?
Thank you. One other follow-up question. I know we're talking residential, but we did talk in the last study session, and you made a brief reference to this, about there are some households or single-family residents that have many, many trashcans. I mean, more than the normal family, I guess, whatever normal is, but a dozen. What, is that going to be part of our code changes and revisions to manage that differently and shift that to commercial? Is that ultimate, I don't want to get ahead of your presentation, but is that incorporated in the ultimate changes that we will be considering tonight?
Yeah, and, you know, that part of the 18-month monitoring program, that helps a lot with that, educating people on how to manage their refus. But there, and we'll acknowledge, there are going to be some situations where people just need more cans. And there's ways to do that. And we could work with them on getting additional cans as they need, and we'll be talking with the council about, do we want to provide free unlimited trash? Or do we want to limit it to those number of carts? And if they want extra carts, they can certainly get them, but then they'll need to pay for them. There's other options and ways to do that. But when we're looking at a program model, we really want a program model to be the three-car system. But there couldn't be exceptions to that. And through that 18-month period, we'll be able to really identify where those exceptions can be made and what those exceptions should be.
Well, sure, I understand that, but some of these households are actually commercial entities. So how will we get at that?
That's going to be another item that we'll be working on in the working group, is how to maybe identify residential-based businesses, whether or not they should be a commercial type of account as opposed to a residential account.
Okay, thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Back to the slide. Oh, one back, okay. So this is kind of where we left off. So again, this program would get us an increase in our overall diversion rate and get us the full program implementation we're looking for. So knowing these challenges we're facing, knowing how we're going to have to change our model, we reached out to CRNR, our service provider, and started having discussion with them on getting some price quotes for the adjustments in this. So they sent us an initial proposal back in October that showed about a 67% rate adjustment to be able to implement this program. That's about an increase of $3.3 million a year. So their initially proposed program would increase the cost per household from about the current rate of $15.22 up to about $25.42 per month. So we reviewed this proposal, and we've identified some potential cost-saving areas, and we've asked for some proposal revisions. And these negotiations are ongoing. But the CRNR has made some initial cost reductions and revised the program pricing with, through several meetings with city and our consultants. So these additional reductions are contingent upon the development of what's known as a cost reconciliation process, which would allow for a true-up process over the first few years of implementation. So they may give us the lower rate upfront, but as we start to realize what the true data is behind those contract unknowns, then that rate could potentially be adjusted up to meet the level of service that we're not exactly sure is going to be required. So speaking of those contract unknowns, this is just kind of a quick breakdown or summary of the things, we just don't know until the program's implemented of what this stuff's going to look like. So, you know, the per-household contribution rate of organics, that's something that we're not able to get a handle on until the program's in place. There are some concerns around productivity rates, the expanded recycling route, the number of household service per hour for these organics routes. There's going to be a reduction in the MSW route. Also, there's hourly operational costs and productivity for the single-pass rear loader in some of the space-constrained areas. And there's also the question about recoverability levels for the recyclables collected on the expanded recycling route and after the extensive outreach. So really, once the program's implemented and you've made the changes and you're able to do that monitoring process, then you'll really know how much material you're recovering. How successful is the program? Are they able to sell off their commodities to the level where they feel like they're getting a cost recovery? So these are some of the questions around our negotiations right now that we're trying to work through. So these are kind of some of our options moving forward. There's some alternatives here, and these are some estimated cost impacts. As recent as November 16th, we've met with CRNR to talk through these. And this is kind of where we stand today with our negotiations. So one of the alternatives is alternative one, which would be to continue negotiations without the reconciliation mechanism in place. And that would be assuming we'd be willing to do an eight-to-10-year term. And that puts us at the $23 to $24 range, which would be more around a, you know, high-end 50% increase. Or there's option two, where we could continue negotiations with the reconciliation mechanism in place, assuming that eight-to-10-year term. That gets us the lower rate upfront, but like I mentioned before, there will be additional costs assumed moving forward, and there will be some adjustments there that we'll have to come to terms with.
And the phrase indicated cost per household just means that we haven't reached a deal with CRNR, but that's the range of negotiations?
That's the initial range that we're at right now with negotiations, correct? And then... And then there's alternative three, where we could continue negotiations for a three-year contract to accommodate the rollout of all these program changes and develop the base data needed to really define the contract cost. And that could be done either through the negotiation or in our fee process. But like we talked about, there's a lot of contract unknowns. So through this option, we'd be able to really roll out the program and get a good look at it and know what our true needs are and be able to assign a more accurate rate to that program. So obviously, that'll require some further analysis, but that is an option. And then finally, the other alternative is to just go the RFP route, where we could prepare an RFP with a contract start date of October 2021. And that would initiate our residential organics program starting in, in October of 2021. So that's a fast timeline. We wouldn't be able to make any program changes. We'd have to wait for the new RFP to be delivered and awarded, should be able to put the program together. So again, that puts us in more of a range of what the rate could look like. And these are just kind of market rates. We really don't know what, what's going to be proposed with the process, but gives an idea of what we could be looking at.
All right. Stay here for a second, please. Ms. Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Now, this isn't all completely unknown. I mean, there are cities, and I know on the next slide you're going to be talking about other cities that have already implemented this similar types of programs. So there is data available, isn't there, in terms of the range of compliance and, and usage? So we're not operating totally with unknowns, correct?
You could take that position, certainly. There's, there's other cities that we could compare ourselves to that have a similar program. Each city's unique, and our city's unique with regards to the space-constrained areas and stuff like that. But that's why we're looking to CRNR. And, and you'll see on the next slide, they've got contracts with these other cities. So through this negotiation process, we're hoping that we could chew that up a little more. But that's the position we're in right now.
Okay. Another question, as we begin to look at these alternative plans, and obviously each of them requires a significant increase in cost, what can we do to help our residents become more compliant from an education, communication standpoint? That would have a direct impact on potentially lowering the cost. Is there any, is there anything we can do?
Well, there are some things we could do now, and like we meant, we talked about earlier, that having the blue can. They had the blue can in place, and they really started source separating to the level that they could. We could recover more cleaner material that way. It would help our numbers, it would help our program implementation. That's a change we could, we could start moving towards now. But we still have the organics part of it to deal with in 2022.
Right, that's separate. But the communication, the education effort, because so many people do want us to, I mean, they are conscious, conscientious consumers and, and want to do the right thing from an environmental standpoint. So I think if we could incorporate into our education program some kind of incentive, and there's no guarantee, but the more compliance we get to make the separation distinct and, and easily, easier to handle on the, on the storage end, it might have a benefit. And then under the reconciliation program, that we'll see what our actual costs are as we're into this. And if our residents are really working hard to keep everything separated, that might produce some good numbers. That would ultimately lower the monthly rate. Is, is that assumption correct?
No, that is correct. And, and also, like we talked about, getting all the material into the can. So any material that's left outside the can in those bags, it goes straight into the, the trash. There could be a lot of recyclable material in there, but no one's going to sort through all that. So it just goes right into the mainstream waste. So if everyone manages that, manages that material, gets it into the can, the can it belongs in, there's much more material to recover and cleaner material.
And then to what Mr. Avery was saying, if we had, if, I think I saw on an earlier slide that we're building in a cost of picking up five times a year or some number of times a year that we would pick up these bulky items and incorporating that in our cost structure. But maybe if residents want to do that, not everybody has bulky items, and why should they be paying for it if they never have a bulky item? But for those who do, then they could arrange for, they pick up and carting away on their own. I, just looking at possible variables where the end result is helping our, helping to lower these costs as much as possible to our residents, because they could, they could help own the success of this program.
Yes, absolutely.
And real quick, before we get to Mr. Avery, the, the, to Councilwoman Dixon's point about the comparisons, it's on the next slide, so we'll get there in just a second. But before we do that, Mr. Avery.
So we're, as a city, are we early to the game or late to the game of, of recycling and really promoting recycling?
Oh, we're starting to be a little late in the game.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right. So I think, yeah, there's, obviously, I think the education program is really important. And besides the cost, of course, there's an environmental factor, and, you know, it'd be good for the city to lead on that a little more. And I mentioned this book before called Zero Waste. And, you know, when households really put their minds at it, dramatically reduce refuse and waste and, you know, through composting and just being smart about packaging and what you're buying, that kind of thing. And, and I don't think we're, you know, as a city, we're, we're ready for that. But I think that should be, that should be something that people should be made aware of, because it, it's, you know, there aren't many ways we can impact the world. But from an environmental standpoint, to be able to reduce trash and also save money is, is a real win. If, and especially, it's great to, to educate kids in a household about all that. So I think culturally as a city, we, you know, we haven't, we haven't done that very much. I'm sure there are families that do. But I, I think it would be really good for the city to lead a little more in this regard. And, and, and then we should also seed it with perhaps making it a little more, a little more painful to, to, you know, put out a large amounts of trash. If someone just wants an extra can, I, I don't know, you know, if all the neighbors are complying, but they want an extra can. I, I guess, a bigger family. Also, there are, you know, a number, a good number of businesses that are group homes in neighborhoods. They do a wonderful job serving the elderly and certainly working with people with addictions, but they are for-profit businesses, and they should be, there should be a cost to doing business, and, and they shouldn't be, you know, paying a residential rate. So I think looking at all aspects of this from a cost standpoint, and then layering on, on top, you know, a program to sort of educate and really try and get residents behind it and, you know, work on that, because I do feel we've, we're a little late to the game as well. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah. And at a time when we're encouraging everyone to shop local anyway, to save our local and small businesses, it would sure cut down on a lot of online shipping and Amazon boxes. So I would strongly encourage everyone to do that. Apparently, not just for our local economy, but for the environment, too. So now I've got a double pitch. Ms. Brenner.
I know when I go shoe shopping, I leave the box at the shoe store. I don't bring it home with me because I, you know, and, and I think maybe the more of that that we can do, the better. So, but I do have a question about so many of the people in our community are elderly. Have we talked to Laguna Woods and places like that? Because I'm really concerned about how difficult this is going to be for people in our community that are maybe compromised and not able to do this all themselves.
Yeah, a lot of the, you know, our consultant here, William With Economics, they, they've worked with a lot of other cities who've had to implement this program in, in other areas and have addressed those type of concerns. And through our education and outreach phase of, of the program implementation is where we would address those and identify those needs. But there's certainly ways of doing that.
If you recall, in, in the working group, one of the things we talked about was maybe some kind of valet service that could be offered for the folks who really need an extra hand. Some cities do that. I, I think we used to have that as kind of a free service, but that could be included when the council gets down to the brass tacks of what's in the deal. That could be an option. I was, I was going to comment on Micah to Councilmember Dixon's comments. We are, and the working group's done a lot of work in also looking for cost recovery in some of those things, as you mentioned. Having one can paid for as we're looking with the city's attorney's office makes a lot of sense, because when I talk to the hauler, many times people have multiple cans, and they might have five or six cans, and when they pick them up, they're half-full. And that's an inefficiency, you know, because they have a lot of room. If we could get them to fill two cans versus four, that saves the city money and also kind of helps them realize that, you know, how much refuge you're generating. Some of the cost savings we've talked about that we'd want to bring to you are, there are people in the community that probably ought to be paying a rate that aren't really a true residential. They could be a commercial care unit. And we see in cases, I have one in Corona Mar that sends me pictures of 10 cans out in front, and they're really not acting as a residential unit anymore. They're acting as, or some of our short-term lodgings are acting as hotel rooms. Maybe they should pay a commercial rate. And the working group, to their credit, has looked at that and said, there's some cost recovery the city can get back in here. That's something we'd work in the hauler, too. So some of the cost recovery you'll notice are in the proposal with CRNR we're talking about now. Some of them will be separate actions that we can do. One last thing to Councilmember Dixon's comment, you could, as maybe a recommendation, and I, and I failed to mention earlier, this item's going to be before your own item 20 tonight. We need an action from you. Tonight, we're just talking about it, but there are some specific actions. But if you have recommendations to encourage recycling and getting more people to put things in their cans, we could start an educational outreach on that. And we could also roll out all the recycled cans. We could put out those other 2,000 cans now and just make it so people start recycling instead of waiting for them to ask for a can. That might be something you want to think about, and we could talk about it later tonight.
I had one additional question. In one of our group sessions, it seems like you mentioned that some cities have their commercial and their residential hauler as the same. Did, did I hear that? And, and is that something that we've looked at in order to cut down on the number of trucks that we're having in our communities?
Well, some cities are under what's called an exclusive franchise. So that means they have one hauler doing all the refuse. Here, we're an open franchise, so even with our residential contracts, they're open. So that means we are, are open competitive market for haulers to be able to provide those services.
Would that eliminate some of the trucks if we were not?
Potentially could, yes.
It would, but, and, and we've had some discussions, and the council have to come to thoughts on that, because there is a level of competitiveness. And I think in the past, we, we have liked that open hauler, commercial side. It gives people choice. So with it closed, you'd have less choice, but you might bid out and get a different cost, maybe a lower cost. So it would, it would result in less pickups. And we'll, we have an item after this tonight on the study session. We want to talk to you a little bit about commercial exclusiveness, because we've had some conversations with folks on that, too. So after we're done with residential, we'll move into that discussion.
Okay. Good, thanks.
One more. Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a relative that lives in Oregon on Lake Oswego, and for the last decade or longer, when I visit, and I'm in the kitchen, and I have something in my hand I'm going to throw away, it is, is very specific where it goes. And they've been doing this, as I say, for a long time. And so it starts in the kitchen, and, and what I've witnessed is, when you put it in the right place, it, it's pretty darn easy after that. Okay? So this ta, this will take some time, but I'd, I'd like to be a cheerleader on this, that I've seen it work. It just, it takes time. But you, you go to my sister's house, you put something in the wrong place. You're, you're not coming back for, for a decade or something. So, so truly, people do want to do it. They just need to know how and get used to it. Thank you.
And then Ms., Ms. Dixon.
Just real quick to follow up on that. I mean, it does require education and behavior change. And we don't, none of us want to be, we're not, we don't want to be a punitive city. I think this benefits, the end result is that it benefits our environment, benefits all of us, and potentially can lower our operating costs just because we'll be more efficient. I think I've also told the story, and my daughter lives in Brooklyn, New York, and they, you get fined. They won't pick it up if it's not sorted correctly. And, and that's, New York is New York, but it does drive compliance. And same thing, put it in this, but don't put it there, put it here. From newspapers to plastics, and you have, there are three different, and food, there are four different separations. And it drives me nuts, but it really is a workable system if you, and it becomes second nature. So I think it's, we're really talking behavior change for a good reason, not to be punitive.
All right, let's go to the next slide.
Okay, so here's a comparison of other cities. These are all cities who've gone through the RFP process, just like we're talking about doing here tonight. They've all moved to a three-card system. So you could see there in the next column who the hauler is. CRNR is providing service to the majority of these, with the exception of Mission Viejo, who has waste management. The pre-program monthly rate, that's the rate that they were paying before the implementation of this organic system. And then the monthly rate as recent as July of this year shows what they're paying now as a result of the implementation. So, and this was done through an RFP process. And it kind of shows you the percent change. And, and it's also either compost or AD processing. Those are kind of the two options right now. The majority has moved towards the AD processing. But you can see us there at the bottom, and this is CRNR's initial proposal. This isn't exactly what we've landed on or where we're going to end up. But this is the initial proposal that put us, you know, wanting to look at this comparison and make this comparison. And then below that, you have the averages throughout the county, and just kind of puts in the perspective of where we're at and where we need to be. So on the next slide, like Dave mentioned, we have an item coming before you later tonight in the council meeting, item 20. And this really just kind of gives you, put things in a nutshell of, of kind of where we're at and, and the recommendation we need from council moving forward. And we have some contract terms here with the city contract that expires March 31st of next year. This agreement can be extended for up to 36 months with a 90-day written notice. And then the Newport Coast contract, that expires on October 1st of next year, and that could be extended with 180-day notice for one more additional year. And that can happen automatically. But that's kind of the parameters we have to work in. And so we've kind of narrowed it down to these two options, or even a third option. But option one, we'd like to either possibly extend this CRNR agreement through October 1st, so we could continue negotiation, continue the negotiations for a compliant residential collection program. Or we could extend the agreement to October 1st to continue negotiations, but also prepare a RFP and obtain competitive market pricing for this residential refuse collection program if necessary. Or there could be a third option, where council could direct us to do something as they desire.
All right. So I'm going to jump around on a couple of slides, but let's stay on this one for just a second. So, you know, part of the, quick reminder to everybody that Joy and Diane and I are on the, this residential refuse ad hoc committee. And so we, we've had an opportunity to talk through this a bit. And this is, I'm not saying this is a unanimous view from the, from the group, but it's, it's, it's what we were at least discussing in the, in the context of it. The, it's a, my recommendation would be a slight hybrid of, of what we're looking at in this option one and two. And so I want to walk through the thought process. Let's go back a few slides to the unknown, that one. Okay? So we're looking at basically three different concepts here. The first one is to have a, a contract with CRNR with fixed terms. The challenge, and they all have challenges, and I'm just going to talk real quick about the challenges. The first, the, if we went to a fixed-term contract, the, the price is going to likely be higher. Can you move one slide up? Nope, sorry, the other way. Probably, it's likely going to be higher, and you can see this in alternative number one. And the reason for that is because there's, what's built into contracts like this is basically an uncertainty premium. It's, let's go back a, a slide now. If, you know, if our, if our hauler doesn't know how much it's going to cost to do all of this, they're going to build in a buffer, that uncertainty premium concept. And so we could have the certainty of a price, but the likelihood is they would be more expensive. Let's move forward. So, you know, keep in mind the difference between 2325 and 2180, or 2420 and 2274. I mean, the difference is what? It's almost a, is it a million dollars? Yeah. And, and that's the thing. I, I need you, I need to stress just how expensive this is, because I, we can't be lost in the weeds on this and think that 2420 and 2274, I mean, it's, we're talking a couple dollars. No, we're talking a million dollars or so, somewhere in that range. And so it really matters when we're looking at this, what the, what the potential differences in costs are. Number two is that reconciliation concept. Let's go back a slide. So when we're looking at this, you can take care of this contract unknowns by basically having, you know, those, those unknowns taken care of, certainly in the, in the first couple of years. Perhaps it has to go to three, but a hauler would know pretty quickly. And then you'd have a pretty smooth contract term. And then you'd have a pretty smooth contract term, likely, at least, a pretty smooth contract term for the balance of it. You just won't know exactly how much it is year in, year out for the first two, maybe three years, but it would at least smooth out and most likely result in a reduction from the first alternative, simply because you actually know what the hard costs are. It just requires a little bit more staff time and potentially our contractor to help us out in those first two or three years. And then let's go forward one more. And then, and then the RFP alternative. So the RFP alternative is an interesting, it's an interesting one. The challenge with the RFP alternative is, one, we actually have seen what the RFP responses have looked like in other cities. Let's move forward one. And so what we're seeing is responses from, you know, the hauler we're already using, and from waste management, most recently in Mission Viejo, right in those ranges that we would anticipate, seeing the costs being. And the, you know, the challenge is that a city like Mission Viejo, a lot more spacious than the city of Newport Beach, so you could probably have a pretty good idea of what the cost would be if you're going in and bidding that, as opposed to ours, which have those unknowns, and so you're going to have those built-in premiums. And so, if you go to the RFP route, you can't really do the reconciliation approach, because you're not going to be getting a, you know, you won't be getting a bid that has anything but the uncertainty premium is built into it. So that said, my preference would be, and let's move forward one slide. My preference would be tonight to approve the extension, which will be item number 20?
20.
20. With the idea that we need a little bit more time to try to reach a deal with CRNR. But what I mean a little, I mean a little, because given our requirements for compliance, if we need to go to RFP, I think we need to go to RFP by the end of January. And so, my recommendation on this would be to, you know, try to reach a, try to reach a deal that we could, we would feel comfortable coming to council with and making a recommendation on by the second meeting in January, or make a recommendation we go to RFP. Or frankly, both. You know, if we, if we brought an agreement to council and the majority of council said, no, that's not what we want to do, then we go to, then, you know, the alternative is we go to RFP. So what I'm saying is, we've got a timeline here to, a question from Mr. Avery on, are we a little bit later? Are we in the middle? Or are we early? It, you know, in this process, I think we're getting to the point where we're, you know, we need to fish or cut bait. And so, we're, my recommendation frankly is just, is, it's not simple, but it's, I think it, as I've laid all of this out, I wanted to make sure I was explaining my thought process. I think the thought process is simple. We have, you know, the best offer that we can get from CRNR to cover all of the needs that we have. We bring it to council on the second meeting in January. Council either approves or doesn't. If it doesn't approve, then we go out to, then we, you know, we initiate the RFP process. And at least, you know, and we would do it with eyes wide open, knowing that there's a decent chance that it would actually, we would, it would come back, and we'd see an increased amount, because we wouldn't be able to go through the reconciliation process on an RFP. But again, that's a risk that we have to take at the dais. But I think, I think, given the timeline, I think that's where we are at this point. So, that's my pitch on where I think we get to, and we'll go to Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of follow-up comments. On these list of cities on the prior slide, Laguna Beach, I don't see Laguna there, and I mean, some of their condensed, high-density areas are similar to ours. Do they, who do they use?
They use waste management.
Do we have any numbers for Laguna Beach?
I'm going to jump ahead really quick here. I've got a backup slide that's got some other cities.
Come prepared.
Oops.
Laguna, no, Laguna de Gallo.
Laguna Beach isn't on here. Laguna de Gallo is, and San Clemente is on here.
I see. All right. And, I'm sorry, go ahead.
These cities have all, you know, had rate adjustments, not just through the RFP process, but also through contract negotiations as well. So this list is much more expansive because of that. The original list was just focused on RFP change, but these are all recent rate adjustments for other cities in the community.
To follow up on the mayor's comments, and I concur with his direction at this point. I just really kind of have a process question. I know you've been, the staff has been working with CRNR and trying to narrow this gap. I mean, we, you know what the issues are, you know what the challenges are. It's either we can come to some kind of an agreement that's in line with what our expectations are, or we, as the mayor said, fish or cut bait, and give us plenty of time to go out and see what there is out there in the competitive marketplace. Because, I mean, you've been talking for several months, you know, I don't know, are we close, or is this as far as we've gotten? And so...
There's still some cost adjustments that can be addressed through the negotiation process, but the bulk of it's been handled, and we're down to the point where there's a lot of unknowns. And so, how much further we could get, I'm not sure, but there could still be some work there, but we really, we're starting to compile a list of unknowns, and that's just something we're up against.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
All right. Any other discussion on that for now? All right, let's move into the commercial, if, preferably quickly, because...
Yeah, we could go through this pretty quick. This is just to discuss the potential of some exclusive commercial refuse collection zones. So as we talked about before, you know, we've got 17 non-exclusive franchise haulers in the city. Five of them are what are known as a tier-one hauler, meaning they could handle all the commercial refuse, and for multifamily units, for recyclables, trash, and organics. The downside to this has been, to this open system, has been that there's multiple haulers servicing multiple businesses throughout the city, leading to an excessive amount of truck traffic, disruptions to nearby businesses and residents, impacts to the streets. So just kind of to narrow down that focus. So each one of these bins, you know, each color represents a different hauler. So you could see there's all these different haulers servicing these areas on any given day. Some of these accounts are a daily service, some of them are two or three times a week, just depends on the level of need. But you could kind of see there the level of impact in those areas with these multiple haulers. Here's kind of an in-person picture view of what it looks like. This is the alley behind Marine Avenue. There are just a lot of bins in there from a lot of different haulers. So there's multiple trucks driving up and down these alleys to service these bins, again, like I said, daily at most.
Just real quick, there are five haulers in each one of these areas, and we've talked to these folks who brought it forward. So in Corona del Mar and Marine Avenue only, there are five haulers on every one of those alleys a day. They're picking up daily on these commercials.
This is kind of an impact of what it looks like at the street level. You know, you get close to the ends of the alleys, and there's a truck, you know, having to roll the bin across the street to be able to service it. There's other trucks coming in behind that, trying to get into the alley, and it's just a small little picture of the level of impact it has. This is another look at Corona del Mar. Each color is a different route, different hauler, and you can see how impacted that small little residential area is, they're adjacent to the village, and it's created a lot of concern and angst for the, for the community there. And so really, you know, the potential resolution to this is maybe establishing exclusive commercial franchise zones. So it would be targeted to, you know, where one hauler could operate in this area, specific areas like blocks or specific neighborhoods, and that would reduce the truck traffic trips or conflicts. And we could even bid it out to a five- to seven-year term for an exclusive franchise to service these areas. And then the remaining area of the city would still be an open franchise, so we'd still be an open franchise city. We're just narrowing it down to specific zones in these areas where we're having these issues. And then again, this reduces a lot of the congestion and problems associated with that. So what we, and just to preface this, it's a big process to do it, and that's why we were kind of, wanted to kind of try to break the ice with it here tonight, to see if there's interest in it. If there is, we could certainly go down that road, but it's going to be a long arduous process. Even consulting with the city attorney's office, there's a five-year lead time on the notification it takes to do this. So it can be done, and if it's, if everyone feels it's worthwhile, we could certainly go down that road, but we want to kind of get a somewhat of a feel for the council's interest in this.
Ms. Brenner.
I've spoken with the Corona del Mar bid about this, and some of my merchants, and some of the, and a lot of the residents. And I'm very interested in this because one of the problems with having the, all the different trucks is that some of them are pulling in, some of them are backing up, they're beeping as they're backing up. It's so close to the residences that are adjacent to our business district, that it's really problematic. And in talking with the businesses, we also thought that we might be able to actually save the businesses some money by putting this out for bid and having the different haulers compete to give them a rate. So I think from the standpoint of just convenience to our people that both work and live in our small areas like this, that it's definitely worth considering. And I'm also wondering if we should at least look at the possibility of having one hauler for our residential and our commercial, and seeing if maybe they would give us a, if they would negotiate with us even more aggressively if we were also including our commercial districts in that.
So, I'd be interested in this, but I'd rather have it kind of vetted a little bit more at the ad hoc level, because there's a lot here. And if, you know, if it's going to take five years on even a special zone, it would take, you know, it's, it doesn't strike me that we have the option, at least for now, to deal with the, to deal with it, you know, combining it into the residential. But my, I'm open to having the conversation, but I'd rather do a little bit more of vetting at the ad hoc level than here, because I, there's a lot of, I have a lot of questions, and I'd rather ask them, I'd rather ask them when there's a little bit more time to think it through.
Absolutely. We can make this an agenda item for the ad hoc committee to continue to explore.
Yeah, let's do that. I think right now, we really need to stay focused on the residential. But I, especially if we've got a five-year, five-year... I was going to ask how, you know, how it affects the current franchises. I'm not surprised that there's a pretty long lead time. Okay. I think we can, I think we can vet through this. All right. We'll bring it back for discussion on the, on at least what I had made the recommendation, but for now, I think, let's go out to public comment on it. So, we'll, the community room is open, but if, for the folks who are here, why don't you come on up, and we'll have a traditional public comment, feel like the good old days, sort of, either one. Can you tap it just to see if it's on? Okay.
Hi. Nancy Scarborough here. Thank you. I want to ask the question if you have considered accessory dwelling units? We're compelled to have unlimited number of those. We could double our population in a matter of 10 years. They have one water bill, and they have multiple families living in one home. So how do we address that? How many cans do they get? Do they all have to have the same number of cans? Three families put all their trash in one can? Don't know. That's just a question. Second question is regarding California energy requirements and vehicles, the trash trucks. If we get all new trucks, and then California continues on its current path to restrict the types of fuel that those vehicles can use, in five or 10 years, we could have a requirement for all electric vehicles or some other kind of fuel? So we now have new trucks that we're going to replace? What happens when we have to do that? And the third is just a suggestion. It seems to me that short-term lodging really is a business, and I would suggest that we consider it to function as a business and maybe put those people in the business category. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Happy Thanksgiving. I want to thank staff for this. This is a really tough project. I mean, nobody likes trash, but so many people are addicted to generating trash. So this is a really tough one. Thank you. I took some notes. I'll start with a quick one to answer Diane's question about Laguna Beach. The only thing I know is that after our first study session, and I asked them, I said, does every street in Laguna have three carts? The answer was yes. I don't know anything else. It's just hard to change habit, plus the compliance things staff mentioned. So I would echo to what you said, is that since we're changing, we'll just change it to the best possibility we can now with the knowledge that it's just hard to change habits. So, I'm actually really excited about this public education part. Looks like we have quite a few experts here, besides Brett mentioned Zero Waste Home, and Duff is going to do that, too. It's really a water quality problem, too. And then we got, Will's tying this with Shop Local. Yes. Think we need some PSA to tie these things together. And Joy has been saying environmental justice, that's just another problem. I mean, since COVID started, there are just so many articles about the dignity of sanitation workers. So when we generate trash, we need to think about that side. They pick up our trash. What do they get, right? So, yeah, public education, that will be exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. First of all, this item strikes me as the kind of item that would really have benefited from the presentation being posted for the public and you to review before you came here to the study session. There were a lot of numbers to look at, and if you'd looked at those before, I think you would, would be helpful for everybody. As to the proposal for a three-cart system, I wanted to recollect, I think I'm correct about this. Before we had the contract with CRNR in 2013, everybody provided their own trash barrels. There was no such thing as a blue-topped trash barrel, as I recall. And to avoid the necessity for that, the people at that time, and for several years before that, had been asked to pay a recycling fee, which we continue to pay, comes on our municipal bill every two months. And so some people may now think, because that fee was supposed to handle the recycling without the need for the blue top, that the vendor is kind of now asking us to do what we are paying the vendor to do, or thought that we were. However that is, I think it's important for the council to understand that CRNR serves other residential areas within Newport Beach under a separate contract, which it has with the Costa Mesa Sanitary District. Those areas, which include Santa Ana Heights and some areas along the border with Costa Mesa near the Back Bay, are served with a, currently with a two-cart system, a black-top cart for just waste in general, and an organics cart. CRNR consistently reports to the Costa Mesa Sanitary District that they are achieving 60% recycling, 49% in the mixed cart with no sorting on the part of the residents, and 100% in the organics cart. So that comes out to 60%. So I'm wondering why we are doing so poorly, and why we could not also get 60% with the same system, same vendor? And that district is worrying about complying with what they think is a, or was stated by the state as being a goal to get 75% diversion by this year, 2020, which they have not managed to reach. So I'm wondering if there is a 75% goal that we as a city also have to reach? And as Councilman Avery alluded to, diversion and these percentages mean nothing at all if the volume of trash is always increasing. And I have heard, and I believe, that the real goal of the state is to reduce the per-capita amount, the pounds, total pounds of trash that go to the landfill per capita from a city below a certain amount. And I'm wondering how we are doing on that goal? And then finally, in addition to certain areas being covered by CRNR, different contracts, I think we have some isolated residential areas served by waste management already, so it might be good to know how they are handling those areas. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the next speaker, please. We'll go next speaker, please.
Good evening, members of this council. My name is Charles Klow. I did intend to speak on this subject, but there's a couple of things I'd like to throw out. First is when the city transferred from city-sponsored, city-provided waste hauling, one of the pitches given to the citizens was that they weren't recycling before and they didn't have to now. So it was pitched as being optional and folks kind of remember that and that it was never pitched to them as someday going to be a requirement. Additionally, the, the regarding commercial and the other trash haulers in Newport Heights where we live, they routinely cut through Newport Heights going from 17th Street down to PCH. We know they are not our waste haulers because they're not CRNR. And every day there's a plethora of them that make their way instead of going around Newport Boulevard or Dover like they're supposed to. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any speakers in the community room? All right. Do we have any calls? Okay. So we'll bring it back. Dean, I actually have a question on the, on the, um, the, the, the point raised by Nancy about the fuel changes that are required from time to time on, on trucks. You know, a large part of any bid on, on something like this is going to include the, you know, the infrastructure and trucks are pretty expensive. So what, um, what are your thoughts in terms of where the state seems to be headed and, for the, for truck vehicle, for the trucks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Dean Ruffridge with CRNR. We're very involved in, with the state and with the governor in providing clean air vehicles. And we have supported, uh, CRNR has, and most of the haulers have supported the change to electric vehicles by 2035. Now currently there is not an electric vehicle that I could buy to do a route in the city. It won't finish. The, the electric vehicles that are available right now will do about a half a day before they need to be charged. Uh, the other, the other issue with electric vehicles is that they're considerably heavier. So there's more wear and tear on, on the infrastructure and less payload. So it could add routes and so forth. The technology for the large trucks is just not there yet. And I think that's one of the reasons why the governor went to, out to 2035 for that requirement and hopefully the technology will catch up to it.
Okay.
And if there's one other thing I could add, Mr. Mr. Mayor, it was brought up earlier about the two cart system versus the three cart system. I think that's an important thing to make a comment on tonight. I think CRNR is the last company in the county to provide two cart programs. We provide it in four communities, Newport Beach, Costa Mesa, Stanton and Rossmore. And all four of those communities, we have, we have made a proposal to change to a three cart program. So we will eliminate two cart programs in Orange County. Costa Mesa will not review it until after the first of the year, but they do have the proposal. Rossmore, um, that's the county, the county area. They, they will require us to go to a three cart program. They have a single cart program right now, believe it or not. And the other one, Stanton, the city of Stanton has already approved the three cart program and approved the rate and that will go to council in January also. So Costa Mesa, Newport will be the last two, and I'm assuming that'll happen in the next few months.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Dixon.
Just one other question, and I thought there was another question before. If you wouldn't mind, Ann, Dean, if you want to, sorry to pull you back back. On the fuel source, when I went out to Paris, didn't, isn't that part of, are all your, are all your trucks now clean natural gas, ENG?
Most all of them are, and actually we're running RNG, renewable natural gas.
Even better.
So, um, one of the things we brought up to the governor and Cal recycle is that our fuel RNG is actually cleaner than electricity because it's got a negative, it's got a negative impact on the environment. The other thing is, um, which I hope explains that, and that's some, it's something the governor's taken into, into consideration right now because RNG is a new thing. Uh, there's two more anaerobic digestion plants that are under construction in San Diego County, as you're probably aware of. And that, that hauler, which is a private hauler also, will be lobbying the governor in his office on the same, same issue as we are. Now, the other thing is getting to 75%. That's a tough one. So CRNR is, is the only company right now that has signed contracts with CEMEX up in Victorville. We, we have an option for some of our cities. Costa Mesa Sand District is considering that right now and Mr. Mosher, I'll talk to him about that later. But we've, we've brought to their attention to get to 75, we've got to stop taking stuff to the landfill. So that landfill residual from the, from, from the blue barrel or the landfill barrel itself can be burned in lieu of using coal at the cement, cement plants. A lot of people don't realize it, but right now the coal plant in Victorville burns coal, about 150 train car loads a day of coal. And they're outside of the air district and so forth and so forth. With our EMSW program and preparing, repairing product to burn, we will eliminate substantial amount of coal coming from the Pennsylvania, Ohio and Indiana areas into Southern California. So that's, that's something we've signed contracts on. We're, we're ready to propose it to Costa Mesa, the very, very Costa Mesa Sanitary District, excuse me. And that's something that we could talk to you and your, your staff about in the future.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. So let's go back to the, uh, the options real quick, just so I can highlight this. The, um, we don't actually have to do a straw poll tonight because we actually have something on for current business at, on item 20. But I do want to just highlight again, the, the thought process, at least on this issue is, um, just set up a, set up a time. I mean, we, we need a timeline. We're starting to get into crunch time. So the, uh, the thought process would be to recommend that we approve, it would basically be item B, uh, B1, sorry, B1 on item 20 tonight, extend it out with the caveat that we would bring this back for the second meeting in, in January for either an approval of terms with CRNR or to go out to RFP. So, um, unless folks have, you know, strong opinions on that, we can move on to the next item. All right. Seeing none. Thank you very much. Appreciate this. All right. We'll now move into public comments. Madam Clerk.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
All right. Do we have any public comments in the room first?
Evening again. I have a comment on the circulation element update. So Diane, Brett, Joy, thanks for coming to the workshop last night. And I also want to say thank to staff, another night of working overtime. So I think we're all learning this online workshop thing, let alone government stuff is pretty boring. So really need to figure out how to spice it up. So as we plan more online workshops, and I hope we could also put in decent amount of more, maybe I should say more was decent, right? So more effort on collective brainstorming on how to make these workshops more exciting. Another thing, something I've always thought about, not just about last night, generally, I've been thinking about the preparedness of the participants. I mean, people, most people don't really understand this government stuff anyway. So, um, if in our invitation, we could give some homework or a cliffhanger, something to get them start thinking about it before the meeting. And also at the end of the meeting, give a little homework or take away something, they can keep thinking about it and to talk about with neighbors, other people. So I think that would go a longer way. So actually I only started paying attention to the subject last year since the general plan update committee. I find it fascinating. This is related to everything. It's air quality, it's water quality, it's just about everything that's connected to circulation. And so many articles about smart cities talk about it. So this is only more exciting, using technology, new things you do. This is a pivotal moment. We have a say here. Lastly, I think we are onto a really good start. Last week, planning commission meeting got several public comments. So last night I counted a two points. At one point we have 16 people, another point we have 15 people, non-city people. So we're doubling. So hopefully next time we get 30 people. That's pretty good, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Do we have any in the community room? Or do we have any calls? All right. We'll bring it back. And, uh, before we jump into close, the closed session description, just so everyone knows, tonight the council's going to do the closed session in the, in this council chamber. So we're going to clear, uh, everyone out after we do this. And then just, uh, this might be for AV purposes. I'm, um, I'm gonna, I don't want to sit here and talk sideways to my council members. So I'm going to go down there. Can we keep some of the mics on? So maybe not. All right. I'll speak loud. All right. That's fine. All right. So we'll, um, all right. Mr. Mr. Harp, closed session, please.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. The City Council adjourned a closed session to discuss items for A and B, including meeting with, with, um, council, discuss the performance of the city manager, city attorney and city clerk, and also to meet with labor negotiators, Mayor Will O'Neill and Brad Avery, uh, Mayor of town Brad Avery, discuss labor negotiations with the city manager, city attorney and city clerk. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We're going to stand in recess until six o'clock, regular meeting. Thank you. All right. Welcome to November 24th, 2020, uh, regular meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Duffield is currently absent.
All right. Uh, Mr. Harp, I will advise that we have no closed session report. Do we have a closed session report?
Uh, thank you, Mayor O'Neill. There's no closed session report.
Thank you. All right. At this point, uh, please stand for the invocation, which I'll lead, and then the pledge of allegiance led by, uh, Councilmember Hurdman.
This is a Thanksgiving prayer that my family's used. Thank you, Father, for having created us and given us to each other in the human family. Thank you for being with us in all our joys and sorrows, for your comfort in our sadness, your companionship in our loneliness. Thank you for yesterday, today, tomorrow, and for the whole of our lives. Thank you for friends, for health and for grace. May we live this and every day conscious of all that has been given to us. Amen.
Please join me in saluting our, our flag. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Madam Clerk.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
All right. Um, at this time we'll have city council announcements and oral reports from city council and committee activities. This is also the time to ask for new items under council policy A1. Uh, we'll start left, my left. Right, Mr. Hurdman.
I, uh, the only thing I have is an A1. To, uh, I'd like the council to take a look at converting the Tideline's Water Quality Committee to a reinstated EQAC organization or committee with expanded responsibilities to include all things environmental.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Dixon.
I guess, thank you, Mayor. A couple of announcements. Just a reminder, uh, we changed the date of the aviation committee. It will now be meeting Monday, December 7th, I think at 5:00 PM, a Zoom meeting. Also want to report on a couple of activities. So I had my District One Town Hall last week and thanks to staff for their support, primarily focused on enforcement issues related to the boardwalk. And, uh, staff updated on the PD, what, uh, they're going to be doing and, and as well as public works. Also, we have a fun project, uh, out of District One, and that is the proposed, the naming of the new fire station and, uh, because it's no longer located specifically on, in Lido Village. These are villages designated in our general plan. It's now going to be in Canary Village, Canary, Cannery, Cannery Village. So, uh, there's a number of suggestions were elicited by the 50 or so members who, residents who participated in the town hall. So I believe John Pope will be doing a survey monkey kind of, uh, program just to push out and get some reaction from people. What should we name our fire station? Also, I want to just update on what's going on in the peninsula. I was driving down Balboa Boulevard. I think I have a picture to support this. And our utilities department was, uh, having a major project, a lot going on in the peninsula in terms of infrastructure and water repair. And so just happened to be watching our, our terrific utilities department staff replacing two large 16-inch water valves that were no longer working properly. And it was impressive to see our utilities staff in action with such a complex project and impressive to see our underground water system and the behind the scenes efforts to maintain and, maintain and repair our water and sewer system. So I just want to thank, uh, our utilities team and public works for their great work. There's a lot of water main and water main valve repair work going on, uh, on the peninsula. Some is planned, some are not planned, there are repair, emergency repair, but it's really terrific to see all our investment in our infrastructure. And I appreciate the work of our, uh, public work staff and utility staff. So thank you. And I think that is it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
Yes, thank you for an A1 item. First, I'd like to start off by saying, uh, it's been a very tough year for many of us. Many are saddened here about the Christmas boat parade being canceled. I have here over 250 emails of those who have said that they want the boat parade to continue. It's a 112-year-old tradition. It's very important, I think, for many people. They have memories of, uh, of the event and they look forward to, uh, to it and the year. It's, it's a light during a dark time. So I'm going to ask staff to put on a place, a future agenda for council to discuss a safe and responsible way to assist in the continuance of the boat parade this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Brenner.
Yes. Let's see, I think we have a slide for out of my last town hall meeting where we had about 90 people on the call and we were talking about various things about traffic management in Corona Del Mar and, and, um, the possibility of one-way streets, the possibility of paid parking, a variety of things. We have put together, John Pope from our public affairs department and our CDMRA and the chamber have come up with a survey that we have online where we're asking the people in Corona Del Mar and the surrounding area to answer some questions for us and tell us how they feel about different solutions to problems. So a postcard was sent out to all the CDM area, to property owners, but other people can go onto the, um, our website at NewportBeachCA.gov slash CDM survey and answer these questions. And I am asking specifically for me because I want to know what the people in my district really want me to pursue as far as solutions, solutions to these problems. One of the things that came out of our town hall meeting was us emphasizing to the police department how, uh, how frustrated we are with the loud vehicles that are in our community. And we've seen a lot of the signs that the police department has put up saying that loud vehicles will be cited. And our next slide is from Officer Posoros sent me a, an email with this picture and he said, "We had another busy weekend. Motor officers wrote numerous citations for loud exhaust and we towed all three of these vehicles in the picture for street racing." Over $1 million worth in vehicles in the picture. Lamborghini, Porsche and Mercedes AMG. All three vehicles were impounded for 30 days. We also were at all of the car shows warning people about the loud exhaust. And, and I just, I'm very pleased to report that because I think our citizens spoke loudly and clearly about how important that was to them and our police department really took it seriously. So that was, that was wonderful to hear. And then, um, the Corona Del Mar Christmas walk is normally the first Sunday in December. And our CDM bid and our CDM chamber are taking the COVID situation very seriously and they obviously could not hold that one-day event where the sidewalks are mobbed and everyone is in close proximity. So what they have done instead is they have done a month-long, um, a month-long program where they are having storefront decorations, they're having where they are having storefront decorations, they're having special lighting, they're having a holiday lighting and decor contest. And if you go to the cdmchamber.com, you will see all the different merchants that have different promotions that they're putting on. So they're really encouraging people to get down into the village on a scattered basis throughout the month, and they're having pop-up events and things, but not publicizing a date and time so that people don't show up all at one time. So that's, that's going to be a lot of fun in the village. And in addition to that, our next slide is that the CDM Residents Association is also having a contest, and they're calling it Light Up Corona Del Mar. And I think that's our next slide, or maybe the other one. But anyway, so they're having a contest where they're giving prizes, and they will be judging. I think the deadline on that is December the 12th, but if you go to cdmra.org, you can get information about that. So, and that was another sort of COVID-sensitive activity, thinking that by lighting up the homes in, in the village and in the surrounding area, that people can get in their cars and drive around and see the Christmas lights, and it's a safe and sane activity for people. So everybody's really jumping on board and, and sort of reimagining their events for this year.
Thank you. Mr. Avery.
Yeah, I've got a couple of great gift-giving ideas for folks that want to contribute civically. And the first one is the Newport Beach Public Library Foundation's holiday fundraising campaign. And this year, they're stressing through the CARES Act, giving has never gotten more rewarding in terms of tax breaks. So that shouldn't be your main reason for giving, of course, but it's always a good incentive. So there are new giving opportunities for non-itemizers, unlimited deduction for cash gifts, and relief from minimum distribution requirements for IRAs, and IRA-qualified charitable distributions can still be made. So there's also increased giving opportunities for corporations. So this is over and above what has previously been allowed from last year. So it's worth looking into, and this all goes to our wonderful Newport Beach Public Library Foundation, which is a partner of the library and of the city, and funds a huge amount of books and materials for the, for the library. So a very good cause and a great way to give back this time of year to our city and the library, which is, I think, the best library anywhere in the country. And then we have also, we get from time to time, and I think we, a lot more people wonder about this, but if you are compelled to reach out this time of the year and, and help those who are experiencing homelessness, you can do so through the city. And that would be on the city's website, newportbeachca.gov backslash give, G-I-V-E. And if you don't write this down, you can always contact the city and get that information, or go online and you can find it at the city's website. But it's, it's the time of year where it's cold out and we have people in need in our community. And so, again, helping the homeless, and they can find out that way through newportbeachca.gov/give. And I also wanted to discuss, when the next slide comes up, as those who follow the city are well aware, the general plan update is, the first stages are underway, and it's happening, and we have a lot of people who often ask, "How did this get to be like this?" And the time to ask that is ahead of time. And that is, you're allowed to do that, and you can do that through participating in the general plan update and through these workshops that are being offered by incredibly talented staff and by community volunteers who have a lot of knowledge in, in these subjects. And so I attended the Housing Suitability Virtual Workshop Part Two, and I also attended the Circulation Element Workshop, and that involves traffic circulation around what we're, we're seeing currently. And then, obviously, with the development that's going to be happening in Newport Beach over the next 20 years and ongoing, these are critically important things for the city to have input from residents on. And I was really, really impressed by these workshops, the staff explaining these things. And to me, they were really interesting, both of them. And I learned a lot. And the only thing that was really disappointing was the lack of participation. And I don't, I think we need to do more as, as a city to get the word out, because an awful lot of effort goes into it. And our planning department and community development department, just incredible staff and some community experts, and then the residents who do participate have, they add greatly to these workshops. But we're only getting about 15 to 25 community members, and we really should have 100. We should have many more people participating because this is going together, and this is the time for the community to participate in the future of this town. So it's, it's incredibly important because these workshops give you a lot of information and make you a much better contributor to the future of the city, learning about the constraints we have on these issues, and also the possibilities for really making our circulation, our housing in, of the future much better. And so the, on the screen are dates coming up in, in December and in January for the Planning Commission briefing, Circulation Element Themes Workshop, and again, another Circulation Element Themes Workshop, December 16, Planning Commission meeting, and Circulation Vision Workshop and Planning Commission. So obviously, attending all of these would be great, but just dipping into some of them, particularly the workshops, I think, are really well worth it, and I encourage everyone to, to participate in this, because it doesn't come around that often where citizens have a real opportunity to put input into the future of, of the city in this incredible process called the General Plan Update. And finally, I'd like to just say that my mentee, the mayor and I are mentors at Newport High School, mentoring juniors, and Bruce Bennett's here tonight from Newport Harbor, and he's doing a job shadow. I think Bruce is in the community room freezing. And, and he's got, he's been reading up on the agenda and on all the staff reports. And so he's got to now write a report on the job shadow of my part-time job here as a city councilperson. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be pretty quick. The, I represented the city at the City Selection Committee and the ACCOC annual meeting, where we were selecting regional representatives on, on a variety of governmental boards. We had a TCA board meeting. Probably the highlight from that was we confirmed the CEO, CEO's contract, Samuel Johnson, who is doing a heck of a job over at TCA right now. Joy and I attended the Corona Del Mar Residents Association meeting to provide updates for the City Council. Earlier today and all throughout the day, we had a very full blood drive across the way in the community room, co-hosted between supervisor, Chair of the Supervisors, Michelle Steele, and City of Newport Beach. This weekend, we'll be celebrating the 75th anniversary of Sugar and Spice on the island. 75 years. We'll be, we'll make sure we, they get a proclamation. Although I will say, they, they asked for a proclamation, it, don't worry, Grace, it's already happened. They asked for a proclamation that declared them to be the original frozen banana stand. We did not weigh into that. So, anyway, but we'll make sure they get it. And then on December 8th, we're finally seeing the groundbreaking for the station to be named later. So I, by the way, really like the Cannery Station, but I'll, I'll make sure I vote. All right. Yep, so with that, we'll move into matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. The, sorry, is this up on the screen right now? Sure, we'll put that up on the screen. Oh, not that. That comes later. No, that's okay. Basically, our city facilities are closed on Thanksgiving. Oh, there you go. And Friday. All right, Thursday and Friday. Okay. So matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda, there's only one. The first is consideration of installing disabled transfer lifts at Marina Park. If you'd like to see that brought back, please raise your hand.
At 6:00, unanimous?
All right. Now we'll move into public comments. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 15. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by the council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right, council, do you have any items to poll, lodge a, or lodge a no vote on? I'll start from my left, Mr. Heardman.
None.
Ms. Dixon?
I have none.
Mr. Muldoon?
I have none, but for the record, I'd like to state that item number seven, my conflict for undergrounding and interest related to wireless has long since lapsed. I went well over the year just to be safe, so I have no more conflicts on these items. Means I can put on exciting stuff like undergrounding and the new, the name of the, hopefully, Mick Station, that's what I'm going for, the fire station naming. Thank you.
All right. And then, Ms. Brenner.
No.
Mr. Avery?
I have none.
I have none either. Do we have a motion, Mr. Avery?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to balance the consent calendar items, 1 through 15, with the exception of no items pulled. And we also have an amendment on item 1, the minutes.
All right, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Muldoon. At this time, we'll go to public comment. We'll start in the community room.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill, members of the City Council. My name is Jim Mosher. Most of the 15 items that are on the consent calendar tonight look pretty routine. One of them that's unusual is item 14, which is an update and recommendation to make some revisions to the community program grants and special event grants that were approved back in June. It's unusual this year because through no fault of the grantees, some of the events that were expected to happen last year did not happen, and some that were granted money in this coming year did not happen. So this item perhaps needs a little clarification. The most confusing portion of it is the recommendation to grant an additional $10,000 to the Newport Ocean Sealing Association that puts on the Newport Ensenada Race, which did not happen this spring, so the previous grant was not used. And the staff report recommended allocating that to the current year, but then it also seems to be recommending awarding a new $10,000. So I think there needs to be some clarification. If you approve this as recommended, are you awarding a single $10,000, or are you combining this with the unused $10,000 from the spring? And more generally, how are the unused grants being dealt with? Is that up to the city staff, or is the council having to make that decision? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, seeing none, do we have any calls? All right, how many? Hi, go ahead.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor O'Neill, and members of City Council, and most specifically, Councilman Jeff Heardman. This is Arlene Greer, and I'm Vice Chair of the City Arts Commission and a community member. I'm calling in this evening because I would like to express my grateful support while chairing the City Arts Commission in the past years of Councilman Heardman and, and his help with programming on the City Arts Commission.
So Arlene.
I'm speaking for myself this evening.
Sorry, Arlene.
And it has been a pleasure to have.
Arlene, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. So that, that's going to be the next item.
Oh, okay, shall I come back?
Yes, please. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind just calling back in. Give us, give us, give us a couple of minutes, but, but I appreciate that. I want to make sure you get through the whole item on, on the, at the appropriate time.
Okay, that's fine.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arlene.
I'll call back.
Thank you very much. We're the next, next caller.
There may be several like that.
Hi, we're on consent calendar, public comment. Go ahead.
Yes, my name is David Tanner, Mr. Chairman, members of the City Council. I'd like to express my sincere appreciation and that of my fellow residents to Councilman Heardman. Jeff, thank you for the years of dedication you have spent serving the people of Newport Beach. You are and will remain a unique asset to our community. Now that you've spent multiple terms on the City Council and learned the inner workings of the city and government agencies with which the city interacts with, my fellow residents, and I hope you will choose to step up the ladder, to find better ways to serve the people of Newport Beach. On behalf of myself and fellow residents, thank you for your contributions, with their help shape Newport Beach into the jewel it is today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner. All right, do we have any others? Okay. Hi, go ahead.
Hi, this is Nancy Barfield. I want to thank you, Jeff, for all your dedication and time spent on the Newport Beach City Council. I know this is a full-time job and sometimes not very rewarding. My husband and I appreciate all of what you have accomplished throughout your tenure. You are my, what my husband George calls a consummate professional. After years of public service with the school system and the involvement with the city, you are due to reap the benefits of your hard work and move into joy, enjoying life. Thank you again so much, Nancy and George Barfield.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill, and members of City Council, and most specifically, Councilman Jeff Heardman. This is Arlene Greer, your friend, and also Vice Chair of the City Arts Commission, and I'm a community member. I'm ever so grateful for your support of me while chairing the City Arts Commission in these past years. And speaking for myself, it has been a pleasure to have you and Sally join me, Bill, colleagues, friends, and family for the summer concert series on the Green every year. Moreover, I greatly appreciate your support every year during the annual Newport Beach Art Exhibition here in the community. Your presence there was, was absolutely wonderful. Most significantly and unforgettable is, of course, your support to help secure the $500,000 State of California Grant for the sculpture exhibition Phase 5 and 6 at the City Civic Center. Thank you ever so much, Councilman Heardman, for making a difference and providing a fantastic art experience for so many children and art lovers here in the city of Newport Beach and afar. I am looking very much forward to our continued warm friendship over the years and enjoyment of the arts and so much more here in the city of Newport Beach in the days ahead, ahead with you and Sally. Thank you, and all the best to you and Sally for a safe and happy Thanksgiving holiday. God bless and Godspeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, go ahead.
Yes, this is Karen Carlson, and I'm a longtime member, resident of Corona Del Mar, and I just wanted to thank Councilman Heardman for his service. And we've heard, and will hear a lot about Bellboa Island and the Airport Committee, where he spent countless hours, but I would like to go back when I first met him. He was not even a councilman yet, but was starting to investigate and help us and support the Corona Del Mar Library Project. And I feel that it was his help and support that really got it off the ground with Councilman Brammer. It has come to fruition, and it is such a wonderful compliment to our community, and so appreciate everything that he did. And I hope that his expertise and all of the knowledge that he has learned being a councilman, he'll be able to. he'll be able to use in other ways to benefit our community. He is a real asset and treasure. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Do we have any other calls? Okay. If you're in the room, I promise I'm gonna, I'll, I'll make sure you have the opportunity to speak. Um, all right, we'll bring this back up. And this time, we have a motion and a second. Seeing no discussion, let's go ahead and vote.
With Councilmember Duffield absent, the motion carries six zero.
Well, the appreciation knows no procedure. So I, uh, at this time, I wanna make sure that I'm gonna take a, you know, point of privilege as the, as mayor to bifurcate this next item, which is the public comments on non-agenda items, into two sections. The first is to, um, to show appreciation for Councilmember Hurdman, who's attending his last meeting here tonight. And I know that there are folks, because they've already spoken, who would like to recognize your service. And I know that there are folks in the community room as well as in the, in this room as well who would like to do the same. For this, I'm gonna start actually by kicking this over to Joy Brenner.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, I hadn't intended to get teary quite this early, so I, I was going to be very composed. But to start with, we'd like to show a video from Assemblywoman Cottie Petrie-Norris's office.
Good evening, city council members and Newport Beach residents. This is Assemblywoman Cottie Petrie-Norris. This evening, I want to take just a moment to say thank you to Councilmember Jeff Hurdman for his years of service and commitment to the city of Newport Beach. Councilmember Hurdman, you are a consummate public servant, working tirelessly to advocate for the people and the community you represent. It has been such a pleasure to work with you and to get to know you over the past two years. You've made an indelible impact on the city of Newport Beach and on the entire county. My team and I are looking forward to your next chapter and I know that you will continue to serve the city and the people of Newport Beach. Thank you. And to everyone watching at home, happy holidays and enjoy a blessed and very happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, um, I know we have a call coming in from the Corona Del Mar Residents Association. I don't know if Karen Tringali is on the line or if you know, that's probably Karen. Could we try that?
Hi, go ahead.
Hi, uh, this is Mayor O'Neill. This is Karen Tringali from Corona Del Mar, uh, council members. As past president of Corona Del Mar's Residents Association, I've been asked on behalf of CDMRA and it certainly is my privilege to acknowledge Councilmember Jeff Hurdman's legacy of public service. I've personally known Jeff for quite a while, uh, quite a number of years, actually, and had an opportunity to work with him in a number of quality of life issues in Corona Del Mar and citywide, even before he was elected to city council. So I was happy to be asked to represent CDM, CDMRA this evening. And what I'd like to do right now is read into the record a letter that was authored by our current president, Debbie Stevens, and it's for Councilman Hurdman. Councilman Hurdman, the Corona Del Mar Residents Association wants to thank you for your decades of service to the city of Newport Beach, including the last four years as council member and for supporting CDMRA. 2020 was called the year of the volunteer and nobody volunteers more time than our city council members, especially this year. We realize that this was a very difficult year to be a councilperson, that difficult decisions needed to be made and that the residents had very different opinions about what those decisions should be. We appreciate your patience and attention to listening to our residents when making these difficult decisions. We appreciate your support and input on the many committees that you participated in, especially the aviation committee and the water quality coastal tidlands committee. Your work as chair on the aviation committee has resulted in more restrictions on John Wayne Airport that will benefit our community for many years to come. We appreciate your support of the residents of Corona Del Mar and the CDMRA these last four years, through your attendance at our regular monthly meetings, our annual meetings, and through support of your idea, of our ideas and areas of concern, especially things like short-term lodging. You will certainly be missed. Sincerely, Debbie Stevens, on behalf of the CDMRA board members. Thank you.
Mayor, if you'd like to go to other comments and telephone calls and then I'll wrap it up.
Perfect. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna start in the, um, community room. Uh, we'll come to the phones and then we'll finish with any comments that people would like to make who are in the room here. Yep, don't worry, we'll get there. All right, we're gonna start with the community room.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Nancy Scarborough. I'd like to publicly acknowledge my appreciation for the hard work and dedication of Councilmember Jeff Hurdman over the past forty years. Jeff, thank you for working tirelessly and thanklessly on the airport issues as well as spending countless hours every week on so many other issues, committee, um, committees, city projects and events. Thank you for taking my calls. Thank you for answering my emails. I appreciate your thoughtful consideration of the issues, your willingness to discuss projects with an open mind and consider all sides of the matter. Thank you for representing us in such, with such dignity and integrity. We still need you to be an active member of our community and I suspect that the residents will not let you slip off to retire, retire quite as easily as you would have imagined. I know I will be calling you for advice and opinions regularly. Thank you for your service. Newport Beach is a better place because of you. Thank you.
Thank you. We're the next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, I would like to thank Jeff Hurdman for four years of really hard work and great service to the city. I know it's been anything but a part-time job for you. Jeff, I first met you at the Government Affairs Committee meetings hosted by the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce. And, uh, those were very helpful to me 'cause you imparted a lot of information about issues, um, facing the city. And I wanna thank you for including me on your many, many blogs over the last, I don't know how long, long time. Again, uh, giving a lot of valuable information about issues, explaining the technicalities of the airport issues, which are not easy to understand or explain. Your explanation was probably more, well, definitely was more meticulous and, and helpful than anything else I've seen. There was a nice, uh, shout-out to you today in Stew News by Amy Sink, a regular, uh, writer for Stew News. And, um, Jeff, whatever you do next, the best of luck and we'll see you around town. Thank you.
Thank you. We're the next speaker, please.
Good day, members of the city council. My name is Charles Claude. I'm here today to offer my thanks to Councilmember Jeff Hurdman for his years of service to the city of Newport Beach. Jeff served on the original tidlands management committee and was a member of the civil service board prior to running for city council. As a council member, Jeff has lent a willing ear and offered a thoughtful and informed opinion. I have not always agreed with his votes, but there can be no doubt he had the best interest of the citizens when he voted. I believe that Jeff devoted over forty hours per week to this city as our councilperson. I hope his successor can do the same. I know I speak for many residents when I say, "Thank you, Jeff Hurdman." I hope you continue to stay active in city affairs. Your institutional knowledge is invaluable to the residents of Newport Beach. Thank you again for your service.
Thank you. We're the next, uh, next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Sue Dvorak and I'm here tonight to thank Councilman Jeff Hurdman for his service to the community of Newport Beach and especially for the countless hours you've devoted to the airport issues which negatively impact daily lives of thousands of residents. From your participation in Congressman Ruda's Aviation Task Force to wrangling the city's aviation committee into a body that is actually doing meaningful work and producing tangible results, to fielding a vast legion of emails and phone calls from residents, your dedication and work ethic has been greatly appreciated. In addition, I have appreciated your humor and frankness. Well, usually I've appreciated your frankness. But most of all, I have appreciated the fact that you have approached your duties on city council with integrity, honesty and independence. You've shown a dedication to residents rather than to your own political aspirations or an adherence to a specific ideology. I look forward to working, to continuing to work with you in the future on community issues and to always ensure that our airline neighbors use the NADP-1 departure procedure. Thank you so much, Jeff.
Thank you. We're the next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and city councilmen. I think I'm gonna bring a little bit different perspective to this. As I think Will and Kevin would agree, when you're representing somebody, be it a political conflict or legal conflict, you really get to see who that person is. Uh, I've been fortunate over the years to represent people from Ed Royce and Senator John Lewis to Supervisor, now Senator Pat Bates, the Newport Aquatic Club, et cetera, et cetera. And in each of these representations, what comes out from these people is their commitment to their community, their morality, their decency and their ethics. And I could say without any hesitation that Jeff Hurdman is now one of those guys. Over the past four years, I've had the honor to work with Jeff on a number of legal and political issues, ranging from the intently political to the intensely personal. And in each situation, Jeff has been the same, a man of integrity and ethics, someone who truly does care about our community and about what is good for the community, whether or not that position benefits him politically. I have seen Jeff with his family, the lovely trendy and super hip Sally, their blended children and their grandchildren, who truly form, as they should, the center of his universe. He is blessed to have such a strong family and more importantly, he knows and appreciates it. Jeff has set the groundwork for the next generation of negotiations with regard to the airport, has given insight into what we should do with Balboa Island and has fought hard to maintain the quality of life we have here in Newport Beach. And as you know, anybody who supports, uh, the arts and Arlene's passion for the arts gets a number of bonus points with me. Newport Beach is a better place as a result of the work done by Jeff. Jeff, thank you for your hard work. Thank you for your commitment and most importantly, thank you for allowing me to be your friend.
Thank you. We're the next speaker, please. All right, how are we doing on calls? Okay. Let's go with the calls first. Hi, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Christine and I'm a resident of Newport Coast. I want to publicly, um, call to thank Councilman Hurdman for his amazing service to the city and the citizens of Newport Beach. You truly were a voice for the citizens, the people who live here day in and day out, the people who needed their voices to be heard on many tough issues that have come before council. I've spent many Tuesdays watching council meetings, often with my family here at home like tonight. And you have stood your ground on so many issues and spoke with a passion that has not gotten unnoticed. I also wanna thank your wonderful wife and family because every person who holds office, I'm sure, can attest that they can't do it alone without the support of family and friends. So I just want to thank you for making yourself available to us, the people, and for your unwavering love for our beautiful city. God bless you and your next chapter. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll go to the next call. Hi, so make sure you mute what you're listening to and then you can go ahead. Hi, sir. If you can hear me, just go ahead and mute what you're listening to and then go ahead. Hi, if you're still there, go ahead.
Hello, this is Nancy Alston. And I'd like to thank Councilman Hurdman for his service to the community. And of course, since I am a member of the aviation committee, I'd like to especially point out how much I appreciate the fact that he took a, took a committee that on its best day was unorganized. And he shaped it up and we are the better for it. And in fact, just yesterday, I attended a meeting of one of our subcommittees that is working hard to improve, uh, the situation for the residents in regards to John Wayne. So thank you, Councilman Hurdman, for all the things you have done on several committees, uh, including short-term rentals and many others. And I hope you stay involved in city life. And I thank you for all of your service.
Thank you. We're the next caller. Hi, go ahead.
Hi, um, this is Corley Newman. Um, I'm a thirty-five-year resident and business owner here in Newport Beach. I'm calling to thank Councilman Jeff Hurdman for his four years of public service. I kinda come at this from a different perspective because I am an applicant rep as well as a resident. And when I first met Jeff, he, he met me with open arms, with graciousness, with integrity, and has always been extremely responsive in terms of returning emails and phone calls and willingness to talk through the issues. We haven't always agreed on everything, but I've always had tremendous respect for Jeff, no matter which side we end up on. And I wanna thank him in this season, a week of gratitude, um, for his years of service. And like everyone else before me, I hope he sticks around and, and continues to service the community. Thank you very much, Councilman Hurdman.
Thank you. Any other calls? All right, so we're gonna come back in the room. I know we had, if you'd like to speak, you can go ahead now. Oh, sorry, if you wanna come up, come on up. So we're, that's okay. We're recording it, so we wanna make sure. Yep, come on up to the microphone there. Oh, the microphone right there. Perfect.
Hi, my name is Thomas Fad McGregor. And, um, thank you guys for your support. I went to Kaiser, Ensign, Woodland, Harbor. I was born right there across the bay. Thank you guys. I love and appreciate you. McGregor out.
All right, thank you. All right, do we have any other comments at this time? All right, we'll bring it back up. Joy, go ahead.
I think Diane, if anybody else wanted to say anything and then I'll finish up.
Okay.
Well, my seat made up here. I wasn't expecting to be doing this on today's meeting and, or anytime this year, so it's with gratitude. Cora just said that. And this week of Thanksgiving, we have so much to be thankful for in our city. But I'm grateful to have served with you, Jeff. And, and I met you when I was considering running for city council several years ago and you were head of the Balboa Island Improvement Association and very much involved for years with Balboa Island. And you've taught me a lot about Balboa Island and the importance of its history and its culture and what makes it special. And I learned that from you. And it's indelibly, uh, in my mind of how we protect our local community. Just one little anecdotal story. When I was mayor and the mayor makes appointments to committees and, uh, I suggested that Jeff become chair of our aviation committee. He said, "Oh, no, do I wanna be chair of the aviation committee?" And I said, "You have an opportunity. We as a city have an opportunity as some issues in the general aviation and just generally, John Wayne issues are paramount in our thinking." I said, "Jeff, you, you have an opportunity to really make a mark for our community in the leadership of this very important community committee. And you can really make it into something that it's currently not." And it wasn't about four years ago. And it, as someone said, it was highly disorganized. Or I don't know if it was disorganized as much as it lacked, uh, defined purposes in terms of our strategic goals. much as it lacked defined purposes in terms of our strategic goals. So, you've taken that committee. It's been organized around specific functional issues. We did the General Aviation Improvement Program. We have the ongoing FAA. You and I and Councilmember Muldoon took trips to Washington, D.C. to meet with the FAA. You have put your heart and soul not only into aviation-related issues, but to the city of Newport Beach. And I will miss you. I've been, it's been an honor to serve with you, and I know we'll see you around, and maybe you'll be standing over there at the lectern and giving us some good advice. I hope so. So, best wishes to your cheerleading group over there, Sally and your family. Always looked, enjoyed looking out into the audience when we had people here regularly before COVID, to see Sally and your family always supporting you. You have a beautiful family, and you're a great person, and I wish you great, this next chapter, whatever you do, we are all better for it, and I know you will continue to make a difference in your life. So, thank you so much, Jeff. Thank you.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've never seen that many people call in favor of someone. I've seen people call against someone, but I've never seen that people call in favor of someone, which is a nice honor for them to give you. You know, when you're elected to city council, it's an honor of a lifetime, and although no one really uses it, you can say you're honorable for your entire life. So, I expect your stationery is still going to say the Honorable Jeff Herdman, retirement. And if you've seen how people are treated when they're off the city council, they're often treated even better. So, you can be an arranged spooner from here going forward and still have the opportunity to be heavily involved in the community, and I look forward to seeing you out there with more respect than ever. Thank you.
Mr. Avery.
Yes, Jeff, I just want to thank you for your friendship during this time on council together and, you know, and also just socially when we'd be at events, and Julie and I always enjoyed seeing you and Sally. And you always made us feel comfortable and, and, you know, accepted, because some of these events can be kind of, you know, awkward, especially when you're a new council person. So, that's very special to me. And also, you know, the council's a body, and we all have different opinions, and we, and it's interesting how we come together, and you are a big part of that. And it's been something to just see your commitment to the city and your devotion to it. I think that's probably the biggest thing for me, and I've always admired that. And so, I think, you know, it's, it's a loss for the, for the council and hopefully a gain for the community, because there's a lot more to be done off council than there is to be done on council, that's for sure. I think we all know that. So, I just wish you all the best, and you're not going anywhere. I'm going to see you around, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Indeed, thank you and to your family for serving, Jeff. I think you and I will need to spend time over coffee in the next calendar year. I'll go to, back to Ms. Brenner.
Okay, thank you for giving me a few moments to compose myself with all those comments. Jeff, I, there are so many things for which I want to thank you. I want to thank you for your passion for our community. The fact that you have done what you have done strictly because you love Newport Beach says so much. There's been no personal gain in this at all for you. I know that. I know it's only been because you and I have spent the majority of our lives here, and we love this place, and we only want it to be better. And I could see that. Even when you and I disagreed, I always knew that you were coming from a place of fairness and of deliberation, that, that you thought long and hard about every decision that you made, and, and you were fair, and you were open-minded, and you had such great communication skills that I, I actually envy your ability. It must be that schoolteacher in you, because you have such a great ability to synthesize information and to present it in, in such an easy manner. I really appreciate that. And mostly, I want to thank you for the legacy of public service and for, after saying no to running for city council since the 1980s, you finally pushed me over the edge. And most of the time, I thank you for that. I, I believe that we both served, and I'm continuing to serve, with the attitude of inspiring others within our community to do it just for the love of our city. And I think that's a legacy that I know you inspired in me, and hopefully you and I can inspire in others, to have other people serve, not because there's any personal gain or profit motive by it, but strictly because this is our community. It's our hometown, and we love it, and we want it to be the best that it can be. And I have to say thank you to Sally. Because of all the spouses on the council, Sally is the one that was here almost every single meeting, and I think we all really appreciated seeing you out there, knowing that you were cheering us all on and wanting us to do the best job for our city that we could do. And with that, we have a little gift for Jeff, and if Jeff and Sally could meet me right here in the front, I will pass this over to you.
Well, that was cool. Thank you, all of you. Thank you, all of you out there for your call-ins, for your, for being here tonight, for the heartfelt comments. I just want to say it's been an absolute honor to serve on city council. An absolute honor. I absolutely loved my work, working with you staff. You're just the best people. And I'm sorry it's over, and I will miss you all, and, but thanks for making it such a great experience for me.
But this time, we're going to move back into normal public comment. So, if you have any public comments on non-agenda items, we'll start first in the community room.
My name is Max Johnson. I'm a 26-year resident in Newport Beach. I just want to thank Jeff Herdman for his service to our city over the last four years. You know, this is, I think, a difficult night for many in the city that really care to be engaged and involved in an authentic way. Jeff, you embody the selfless servant that so many of us want to represent us on council. And, you know, in our city, it's rare to have so many of our residents constantly engaged and informed in what's going on on the city level. And when you get to know council members, you get to know their work ethic, and you get to know where their heart is at. And for someone that, you know, served over 40 years in education, I don't know how many years, I'll just keep it, I think, above 40. But I just want to thank you sincerely from the bottom of my heart, from someone who cares so deeply about the city, from someone who was born and raised here, from someone who, you know, has over 26 years. It's a lot of years, and just you and Joy combined, let's just say it, it makes almost over 100 years in the city here. So, I just want to thank you for your constant engagement and your authentic representation, your incredibly hard work on the airport, tireless efforts to, you know, do the best job that you can representing your constituency. And I just have to say, it's a lot of work, and it's a thankless job. I mean, all of you on council, it's a thankless job, and you know that, and it takes a lot to, to be on council. So, I just have to say a huge thank you, and it's been an honor, too, to see your growth, I think, as a, as a representative for the city. It's, I think, really unique to see where all of you start and where all of you end. And I don't think that this is the end for you, but it's been a pure joy to know you and to have seen the growth that you have made from the beginning, joining council to the end right now. But again, I don't think this is the end for you, and I really hope to see you and look forward to continue to see you stay engaged and informed on, on this, just with city affairs. I don't think you're going anywhere, we know that, but we love you and we care for you, and a thank you. So, and a thank you to all of you also on council. It's a, it's a really difficult job, and it really means a lot to us as residents to have representatives who are emotionally intelligent, ethically and morally engaged in civic affairs and really care about the city. So, for those who have lived here for, you know, 20-plus years, it means something different. So, thank you, Jeff. Thank you for all of your hard work. We love you.
All right, we'll go, next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm, I'm going to change the subject before I have to give another box of Kleenex to Joy. I just have a quick comment about the Planning Commission circulation element last night. Was it last night? I don't know, night before. There's a lot of meetings. It was nice to see several council members attending that meeting. I was disappointed that there were not any Planning Commission members that attended, including the liaison to the Circulation Committee. That was a disappointment to me. So, I don't know if there's anything that can be done to suggest that that is a, something that should be participated in, but it was, it was interesting, informative. I think it was better than the housing meetings, but I was disappointed that there were no Planning Commission people present. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, do we have any calls? All right. All right, we'll move into public hearings. We're going to open the first public hearing, item number 16, ordinance number 2020-28, Residential Design Standards Amendments to Title 20 and Title 21 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code. I mean, this is a pretty, this has gone through a pretty lengthy process, and I think we've all pretty, pretty well understood what this is. Does anyone need a staff report on this one?
Happy to answer questions.
Sorry? Okay, yeah, got it, okay. All right. All right, seeing none, then we'll go into questions or comments, Ms. Brenner.
Simone, I just wanted you to address Jim Mosher's comments about the 30-foot lot. In his comments, he, there was some confusion about, about that. Can you clarify?
Certainly. I'm going to introduce Principal Planner Jaime Maria, who worked on this, and he has a kind of a better understanding of the 30-foot lot, so I'll, I'll hand it over to Jaime here.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Yes, so, the 30-foot lot, that's a standard lot size predominantly throughout the city. How our residential design standards apply, if your lot's 30 feet wide or less, you're allowed greater third-floor area, 20%. If your lot is wider than 30 feet, you're allowed only 15% on that third floor. And then that same width applies to when a side step-back is required. So, currently, a side step-back's required only for lots wider than 30 feet, and that's part of the problem, is since that's the, you know, predominant lot size, we're not getting that upper-level articulation on 30-foot-wide lots. And so, part of this amendment is to apply that two-foot side step-back on 30-foot-wide lots, so it applies to more properties. Mr. Mosher's comment suggests that we should also restrict that third-floor area allowance to 15%, so that the two standards apply for 30-foot-wide lots and not in some cases, you know, I'm sorry. So, the side step-back would apply for 30-foot-wide lots, but not the, they wouldn't be able to take advantage of the increased floor area. But we're concerned with that in that the narrower lots, it's harder to fit all the floor area within the first and second levels, and so they do need increased flexibility on that third level. So, it's staff's recommendation that we maintain the 20% allowance for 30-foot-wide lots, but we do want to apply the two-foot step-backs so we do get that upper-level articulation.
And what is it for 25, for a 25-foot lot?
For a 25-foot lot, they would be exempt from the side step-backs, and if it's an R2-zone 25-foot lot, there's no limit on the upper-level area, but our amendments do propose applying a front and rear step-backs to get that articulation.
And Councilmember Brenner, we, we did a lot of outreach with not only just the community, but also the design professionals. We wanted to talk to the architects, like, can you make this work? And so, the feedback we got for those really skinny, narrow lots, it wasn't working, but our proposal was not working, so we had to grant a little bit more flexibility for those skinnier lots, to allow them to build to their kind of full potential.
So, are Balboa Island lots 30 feet, like Corona del Mar?
Yeah, the, the typical lot size in Balboa Island's 30 by 85.
Okay, so it's a little bit less deep, but it's the same width.
Correct.
So, are we going to solve the problem of all the people complaining about that third-story massing by changing it this way?
That's what, that's what we've proposed this evening. We feel that we're able to address the mansionization issue, address the massing issues. At the same time, we've gotten a lot of community support for what we've proposed. You'll see a lot of public comments this evening, is a lot of support letters, and we've gotten support from the designers and the architects that they're able to support what we've gone through. It, it's morphed quite a bit since what we originally looked at, but SB 330 really kind of tied our hands in really what we wanted to do. So, I think this is the best we have to address the concerns and not violate SB 330.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. So, essentially, this is, we had a, I think we had a study session on this, correct?
We've had a couple, correct.
And because FEMA requirements, the lots are appearing higher, so the first floor is higher than typically a neighborhood would. And if they're going three floors up, the problem was not so much that they're going three floors up for many, it's that they were going three floors up all the way to the front and back of the building, and it felt like you were in Santa Monica as opposed to being in a beach town.
That's correct. That's that massing on the third floor.
And you showed some pictures, I think, where basically people were clearly abusing the patios that we had envisioned for them to have. So, this is what this is attempting to do, is to address the patio issue.
Yes.
Not the living space issue.
Correct.
So, what you're proposing here is not a reduction in square feet?
We cannot.
So, it is a complete, it's, you still have the remaining ability for the same square feet, which is what housing prices and property values sort of are based on. So, it's, this is more aesthetic, and it really is not aesthetic in telling people what they can or can't do for design or type architecture. It's aesthetic in that you're saying you can no longer abuse the outdoor patio by making it look like it's a whole nother enclosed extra floor.
That's correct, and we backtested that theory. We talked to the architects and to the designers, and we said, can we still get that maximum floor area off these properties? And the answer came back yes, except for the RM lots, which are the multifamily, and so we had to change it even further to allow them to build to their full potential. As you said, Councilmember Muldoon, this is really just an architectural change. It's not changing any of their floor area or their buildable area.
Well, really, I almost see it as correcting the loophole that people were taking advantage of. It was never the intent that you would enclose the outdoor open space and make it look like essentially another floor. It was the intent that you could enjoy an outdoor open space, so you're still enjoying the outdoor open space, you're still having the exact same square footage, you're still having a, a, a design that you may find, that you may like as far as style, but we're no longer going to permit you to do a makeshift outdoor patio, not really because it's the worst thing, but because that's not what we had in mind originally. It's, it's the intent, we're withholding the intent essentially.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, and Councilmember Muldoon.
And Councilmember Muldoon clarified many of the points I wanted to clarify, but again, I will emphasize that we're not changing buildable square footage area or living space. It's really to fix a problem that was created with the zoning change in 2010, and it really didn't manifest itself in our community to see these loophole patio areas as well as attic areas on the third floor until buildings started to increase after the 2008 recession. So, it really took a few years to manifest itself, and that's when the community really became aware that what are these big, big things on top of, on top of the property? And so, I really want to commend staff, and Jaime, and you, Simone, for engaging with the community, the professional design and building community. We really wanted to be clear, this is not, absolutely not a takeaway of any property or property rights. In fact, on the multifamily, it's just a modest, was it, two inches or something in terms of a setback or stuff?
Right, it's that two foot on the multifamily.
Or two foot, two feet.
Correct.
And some of the property owners who were originally very concerned about that have written and said that they are in support now because we've made the modifications, you've made the modifications. So, this has been a complex issue, and it's been going on now for two years of community engagement and review. I commend you. We've addressed part of the problem or the issue related to Balboa Island and the expansion there. And what this is all about is preserving, preserving and protecting property values, preserving the character of our communities, and just putting some architectural, allowing and encouraging and specifying architectural detail in the construction of our single-family residences as well as multifamily. And because of the new law under SB 30, local government is limited to what it can do, and so, we are increasing density in multifamily areas. We're not changing density at all. No density has changed. We wouldn't have been allowed to do that. And incentivizes more density, in fact, in multifamily zones. So, I find, I really appreciate the hard work that staff put out for this, because it is very complex. Jaime, you did a great job, very complicated, and I think it really will, it will enhance the future development in our city. We could have the extra space on the third floor, but it will be done in such a way that adds to the value of the property and doesn't detract from the neighboring conditions. So, thank you very much, and I plan to support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Avery.
Yeah, I can speak for myself. When you spend this much time on something as critical as this, and something everyone's paying attention to, to have so many letters of support was wonderful, you know, coming into the meeting. And I think that's a testament to the hard work your department has done, and really listening, and, you know, really thinking hard about how to mitigate the issue and still deliver, you know, where you had to due to the constraints you're working under. So, I think it's a really good result, and, you know, I just think, you know, we really were kind of surprised by the changes that happened earlier this century. And it's, change is always gonna happen, but it seems to be more about the rate of change. And so, containing that in terms of the look and the feel is so important. That's what everyone's after, is preserving the character of the town. I think everybody, well, most people accept change as inevitable, but I think this is a step forward in sort of acknowledging change, but at the same time, sort of keeping quote-unquote "the rate, the feel of change tamped down," and, you know, making good neighbors, if you will, creating little valleys and things for the breeze and the sun to get through. It's really important. So, yeah, great. I'm happy we're at this juncture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
I'm sorry, I failed to acknowledge that this issue was brought to us almost two years ago by Councilman Hurdman, that he was the one that brought this up and listened to the people in the community that were so concerned about it and brought it to us. And then our, our staff has just done an amazing job. I own two duplexes in Old Corona Del Mar, and so, I'm speaking as someone who is impacted by this because they are not built out. But I just want people to know, this is not going to make everyone happy. It's all we can do. We've done, our staff has done a great job of limiting it as much as we possibly can, but this is not going to solve the problem of third stories in our two zones, and, you know, it's going to give a little bit more definition and hopefully will not be the huge mass that people are seeing. But it's still, they're still larger than the lots in Corona Del Mar and, I believe, Balboa Island were intended to be built upon. And it's just, this is just the best that we can do, and I want to say thank you to our staff.
Thank you.
All right. I also intend on supporting it, so it sounds like this has the makings of a passage. So, let's go out to public comment at this time, and we'll start in the community room.
Members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. And first, I wanted to say I support this in whatever form you adopt it, but to expand on the question about 30-foot lots and the transition between standards that occurs there, to try to take another stab at clarifying what the issue is there, the staff has made a change. This requirement that the third floor be articulated on the sides by the two feet has always applied to a lot that was 30.1 feet wide. They are now recommending it apply to the many lots that are 30.0 feet wide. That 30.1-foot lot also has a more strict standard for the floor area on the third floor, 15% versus 20%. The staff is leaving the 30-foot-wide lot at the 20% limit, and if you're changing the articulation to be stricter, you could, at the same time, I believe, without violating anything, be imposing the stricter 15% limit that currently applies to a 30.1 could be applied to a 30-foot-wide limit, lot. And I believe that the people who are concerned about the overwhelming size of the third floors would appreciate that consistency, although some of the people who have the lots and want to build them to their max probably would not. The other point I wanted to make is, in connection with SB 330, I hope that this is not challenged, but I believe our wish for articulation of the third floors would be more defensible if it was expressed as a design standard rather than a setback. The staff is recommending that the two feet and the 15 and the 20 feet be measured from the setback lines, which makes them, themselves, to an architect, a new setback requirement that could raise a legal issue. It would better to, and you would achieve the same effect, if you simply described it as an architectural feature, that the third floor has to be articulated by a certain number of feet from the wall under it. So that it's a description of what the wall looks like rather than a setback description. It would be easy to change the ordinance to read that way, and I think would be more defensible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, we'll go to the phones. All right, we'll bring it back. Jaime, any thoughts on what Mr. Mosher was saying there, or are you pretty comfortable on the defensibility?
Yeah, we're very comfortable. So, you know, I spoke personally with HCD staff, and I explained the issues in detail. We also had, you know, our legal division or department take a second look at it, and we're confident that there's no issues with SB 330.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll bring it back up. Seeing no requests for discussion, or, Ms. Brenner.
I was just gonna say I was ready to make a motion.
Go right ahead.
I'd like to move staff's recommendation. And I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Dixon. Seeing no discussion, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 5-0 with council members Duffield and Hurdman absent.
All right. Ms. Leong, item 17's been polled.
Yes.
All right. We'll move into item number 18, memorandum of understanding with City of Costa Mesa toward the funding, development, and shared use of its permanent bridge shelter facility. I don't think we need a staff report on this, but Ms. Leong, would you mind just kind of, at least, giving the high-brush strokes of where we've been and where this helps us get to?
Sure, absolutely. This has certainly been a bit of a long journey, I would say, but I think there had been quite a work over the last, I want to say at least a year and a half, as homelessness has become an issue here as well as in neighboring cities and really across the state. So, we had been tasked through City Council to look at a couple different options for homeless shelter, and had explored some options in the city, but what eventually became the most viable was partnering with Costa Mesa as they're building a permanent shelter in, within Costa Mesa city limits. And I think as the issue has evolved further and looking at the homeless population, it really made a lot of sense to have regional partnerships, and we see that happening in other places along, in the county as well. So, we've been working very closely, both at the council level and at staff level, to come together on an MOU agreement. Costa Mesa is now underway in constructing on their site at 3175 Airway, on building 70 beds there, so 50 will be for Costa Mesa and 20 for the City of Newport Beach here. They have put in, between the purchase of the parcel and putting in the improvements and enhancements, I think it's, they're estimating about 11 million in that range there. What we will be doing is, if this is agreed upon, would be putting in 1.6 million for capital and furnishings here, and then 1 million annually in operating costs for the 20 beds. And I want to emphasize, it's not just bed space, but it's full shelter services with the whole intent of having the homeless who enter into there to be able to move on to the next stages of a housing. So, that, it's that service piece of it that's gonna be very key, that they're currently doing now with Mercy House as their operator, and that would continue there. So, Costa Mesa City Council unanimously approved it last week at their council meeting, so if it moves forward here, then we would move on to the next steps. And they're estimating construction, construction finishing in January with, their intent is to have it operational by March, end of March, so in that spring timeframe. So, that's what we're looking at.
All right. Mr. Avery.
Oh, I just wanted to say, Grace, you and your team, really, I know, worked hard on this, and what a great outcome and great partnership with City of Costa Mesa. And it was so important for us to get to this point, and it's been a long road, and I just think it, it worked out well, and where we are today compared to where we were when we started this journey, it's a new world. So, thank you so much for just pushing it and, you know, helping us get, get to this point.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you. So, a lot of thank yous to be said tonight as we embark on this phase of our homeless journey that's been going on with intensity for the last, at least, three or four longer years. It was a Boise decision, so since then. A couple points is, number one, the City of Newport Beach was never involved in a lawsuit, and so, we are, have been moving along this path to do the right thing, to do the right thing in a humanitarian manner for the homeless and people in need in our community, and whether it's at the Newport Pier, the Balboa Pier, or the Orange County Transit Center, we have homeless and in various other sidewalks. I know in McFadden Place at the Newport Pier, we've had homeless living in our community on our streets, and they deserve better. They do not need to be sleeping on our sidewalks and in our streets, and they need the proper care, whether it's rehabilitation, drug rehabilitation, mental health treatment, but these people need help. And then joining together with Costa Mesa in a sub-regional solution makes sense from a financial standpoint. Obviously, if we had to do this on our own, as we were considering a couple of locations within our own city, and we heard from the residents that that was unacceptable, as well as it would have been multiple times more expensive for the city to bear alone. So, we appreciate the City of Costa Mesa allowing us to work with them, and they appreciate us for having, making a financial contribution, I'm sure. I also want to take an opportunity to thank Hoag Hospital because our recent development agreement with them, in terms of the development of, proposed development of their property near the hospital, the agreement was to fund, the community benefit, the public benefit agreement included funds to support homeless-related services. So, that's a significant, for 1.3 million dollars over 10 years, I think it is.
It's 300,000 a year for 10 years.
Maybe that's what, yeah.
Yeah.
And so, that's a significant contribution to offset our costs and much-needed rehabilitative and medical treatment. So, I'm very proud of the homeless task force that has been working diligently with members of our community to work on this solution, and Grace, and working with the city, and all the homeless experts in the county, and United Way. I mean, there's so many hands in this project, but we, as a city, can take pride that we're doing the right thing, and we will now have a humanitarian, humane solution, humane solution for the homeless that occupy our public spaces, and that we can help them hopefully move on to a better life. So, thank you for all your hard work, and Mayor, you've certainly led this effort, and members of the council have all had a hand, we've all had a hand in the homeless situation, and we finally are getting to a solution. So, thank you. Thank you all.
Ms. Brenner.
I would just like to say, I'm amazed at the progress that we've made in just the two years that I've been involved on the council, and how far we came just as a city and as a community in, we evolved from a place of sort of panic to a place of really thoroughly understanding this, authorizing the staff members that have become experts on this, that are, as Diane said, dealing with our homeless population in such a humane manner, and that we were able to put our sort of egos aside and, and partner with another city that is also doing a remarkable job and was a little bit ahead of us because of the lawsuit, but that we were able to work with them and they were willing to work with us. And it really shows to me how governments should, should behave, that it was not, it was not about anyone really having the glory or the credit, it was about everyone working together to solve a problem, and I know our community really appreciates it. And I, and I'll be glad to make a motion to approve all of this when the time comes.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're here for a couple of reasons. The state's inability to deal with their own problems, whether it's criminal justice or the homeless issue. The federal courts essentially have given us no choice if we wanted to be able to enforce our own laws and protect our citizens and children. We are here basically now because in order for us to enforce our laws, we must have this service provided at the expense of the taxpayers locally, as opposed to being given money from the state. And I hope it's enough beds under what this federal judge has asked for. It's not even the location that I would have chosen, but with all that said, I think a special thanks goes to the mayor who did a fantastic job, gave us a great deal with City of Costa Mesa. Not easy people to deal with sometimes when it comes to staff and staff competition. A very special thanks to Hoag, who paid for this, or in part helped pay for this, and the amazing services they give to our residents. And I'm not totally sold that this is the solution. I'm not even sure that the beds will be used, but having these beds available will allow us to enforce our own laws under the federal order. Thank you.
You. So, at our last meeting, we did a, we had a homelessness update, and I think it's worth noting that this is by far going to be the most expensive part of our, our approach to ending homelessness on our streets in here in Newport Beach, but it is, it is a part of it. And I think one of the things that we learned was that our point-in-time count from two years ago... And I think one of the things that we learned was that our point in time count from two years ago was in the mid-sixties, was sixty-four. And with the rather incredible work being done, led actually locally by Natalie Bespersion, we've seen the numbers in our city go down in the mid-twenty's of people who are experiencing homelessness on our streets. And that's, that's no easy task when you don't have a shelter inside the city to be able to spend, send someone into to get them up and off the streets, get them a, you know, hot meal, a clean shower, and help do intake interviews. And so what we've seen is our city's embraced a lot of the, you know, it's a very different place than we were two years ago. And two years ago, we actually had to open the windows in the back of this room because there were so many people here to express their frustration at us over this issue. And it says an incredible amount that our community room is nearly empty on an issue like this, given where we've gotten to. So I'd like to just simply say thank you to pretty much everyone, our task force, our council members who went through the task force meetings that were at times fairly contentious. Yeah, that's probably saying it lightly. And with a compassion toward the people who are, who are, who are working through the issues that are bringing them to the streets. And I have to say just a little bit, I'm a little, I am concerned that we're going to see an explosion of homelessness beyond what we're already seeing now, given the numbers that we're seeing in terms of the debt load that people are starting to take on, on not paying their rent in counties like Los Angeles and here in Orange County. Because there's a ban on evictions and people have simply stopped paying. We've already heard stories of people who are on our streets who saw that debt load getting raised up and decided, you know, someday I'm going to have to pay this. I can't keep accumulating debt, and they walked away. And when we eventually, next year, get to the point where the eviction moratorium is no longer in place, we need a, we need a landing spot for some folks, and we need to expect that those numbers are going to increase. And so having this as a, you know, as an ability to help people get up and off and hopefully get into more permanent supportive housing or find housing, or at least get into programs where if they need drug rehab, they can get drug rehab. If they need help with mental illness, they can get help with mental illness. If the need is job training or life skills, those as well. And so this option is very expensive, but part of the reason it's very expensive is because it's, it's those services, it's the wraparound services. And so I am, I'm glad that we were able to get to this point. It has taken a long time. And I'd just like to say over in Costa Mesa, thank you very much to City Manager Farrell and Susan Price in particular for getting this back on track and helping us out. And Grace for developing the relationships with both of them to help get us through this. So it's, it's one more step on a fairly long road, but I'm glad we're on it. So with that said, let's go out to public comment at this time. Do we have any public comment?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council. This again is an item, I support this partnership with the City of Costa Mesa towards building and operating a homeless shelter. But I first wanted to say that earlier this evening, there was some discussion about public engagement and the wish to have more public engagement. And it seems to me that by skipping staff reports after the staff has gone to the trouble of preparing them causes the few people who are probably watching at home to have some difficulty following what it is that you are discussing and about to approve. So I think it is probably not a great idea to skip staff reports. I did read the staff report myself, and I have two questions about the Hoag funding, which of course we all appreciate. First, as the staff report notes, Hoag is going to be paying three hundred thousand dollars a year towards the one million a year in operating costs that we are committing to with this agreement. That, as Councilmember Dixon said, was part of the development agreement extension that was agreed to last year. And under that development agreement, I believe there is a trust fund somewhere. So the first two three hundred thousand dollars have actually already been paid and are presumably in an account somewhere and available for the operating costs. What I was surprised to see is the staff report also mentions another four hundred thousand dollar contribution from Hoag for homeless shelter services to the Emergency Homeless Shelter CIP, it says. That four hundred thousand dollars going towards the one point six million that we are committing to for a one-time payment for the construction rather than the operation of the shelter. I do not recall where that four hundred thousand dollars came from or being accepted by the city council. So I would appreciate if somebody would clarify what the source of that money is. Thank you.
Thank you. Go to the next speaker. Can I, do we have any calls? All right. I go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, thank you. This is Dennis Bress, Balboa Island, and I just wanted to call in to congratulate you guys. This has been a tremendous team effort and a journey, like you had expressed, Mayor O'Neill. It took a partnership with the sister city. And a special thanks goes out to Grace and her team for putting this together. This is, like you said, not only just the twenty beds, but more importantly, it's the wraparound services that will help our less fortunate brothers and sisters to be able to move forward in their lives. So I commend the council, City of Newport Beach, and the partnership with City of Costa Mesa, specifically Mayor Katrina Foley on making this happen. And look forward to you guys moving forward with this partnership. And thank you so much for your continued service, and I'm glad we've got this to a position where we have it tonight. So again, thank you very much. This is about really helping people that are less fortunate. And I want to wish everybody that's listening tonight to have a great and safe Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other calls? All right, let's bring it back. Ms. Brenner, I know you said you'd love to, would you mind, would you mind giving me the, this one?
I was just going to say that I appreciate the members of this task force so much. And I was going to offer to have you and Brad do that if you would like to, because this, we really, I called those meetings "public stonings." And we really suffered through those together, but we got to such an amazing place that I would be more than happy to let you and Brad do that.
I appreciate that. Well, oh, man, this is one of those, it's a long one. Well, anyway, I appreciate that. I, well, I move, I move staff recommendation on this item.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and vote on this.
The motion carries unanimously, five zero.
All right, and I went too fast on our last item, so I need to go back and let the clerk read the title of the ordinance.
For item sixteen, for ordinance number twenty twenty-eight, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach adopting zoning code amendment CA two thousand nineteen dash zero zero four to amend Title Twenty, planning and zoning of the City of Newport Beach Municipal Code related to residential design standards. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, on to item number nineteen. I think we should do a brief staff report on this one.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Steve Montano, Deputy Finance Director. You have a fairly detailed staff report in your pocket, so I'll go through this rather quickly. Stop me at any time if you have any questions. Just to inform everyone, the Finance Committee looked at this item just last week. They reviewed and discussed it.
Steve, I am sorry, I forgot that we have a handful of conflicts. If we were to actually get into the details of projects, as long as we're staying at the general level, we won't need to get into conflicts. So if people pull, stop at project level, I'll need to start collecting conflicts. Go ahead, thanks, Steve.
So given the circumstances of COVID-19, you know, we note that the economy has improved in recent months, but we are so far beating, and we are so far beating revenue expectations. But in absolute terms, we are realizing less revenue overall when compared to prior years. And this is largely due to the sharp decline in spending on certain goods and services, especially for Newport Beach in the leisure, travel, and restaurant sectors. Given the circumstances, however, general fund revenue performance for both FY twenty and twenty-one has been better than expected. General fund revenues overall ended FY twenty ten point nine million higher than projected in almost all categories. And this is significant, given that revenues were reduced in FY twenty by thirteen million in anticipation of a much more severe downturn. And so far through the first quarter of FY twenty-one, general fund revenues are three point two million higher than expected. Here's a summary of our major general fund revenue categories and how they performed at year-end FY twenty. I'll just note that the first four categories listed on this chart accounted for almost half the positive revenue variance you see at the bottom there, that ten point eight million. Here's the status of our general fund revenues through quarter one of this current fiscal year, which is also looking pretty good so far. We've looked at other funds as well, funds that are subject to revenue volatility, and we see no need for budget adjustments at this time. We'll continue to monitor these funds on a monthly basis. Moving on to expenditures, they ended the year in FY twenty three point nine million higher, or just to say lower, which is a good thing, than projected. And so far in FY twenty-one, we are three point four million lower than projected. So good news there as well. Again, here's a summary of our major general fund expenditure categories and how they performed in FY twenty. Same here with FY twenty-one through quarter one. Again, good news to report, everything's looking pretty good. So the point of this next slide is indicate how budget performance translates to fund balance. So you see sources and uses, it's a busy slide, but just let me call your attention to that far right column there. So with higher revenues and lower expenditures and budgeted, we now have an unrestricted general fund resource or reserve of twelve point three million projected for FY twenty-one. And you'll also see here, the, you see that red box, that's what I'm talking about. And you'll also see indicated, and I'll talk about this in a few slides, we are proposing to restore the two point three million dollar draw from the contingency reserve that was used to balance this year's budget. And so with that, you'll see that we've restored the, we're proposing to restore the contingency reserve back to where it was before we took that draw.
Steve, if I can just, just to make sure it's very clear for everyone, that due to the positive revenues more than what we had estimated, because we had put some reductions in based on what we knew at the time with the, starting with the COVID. So we were pretty severe in some areas where we didn't know, so revenues came in much better. We were able to, we reduced expenditures as budgeted, but then went beyond that and really brought that in. So net, having that twelve point two million, that's more than what we had anticipated we would be in this current year with. So it's, I think, a very good thing, and Steve will elaborate a little bit further, but given the uncertainty that we're going through now, that we're going in with twelve point two million more.
So in other words, we're starting the year with basically a twelve point two million dollar surplus. And the question is how to use that to roll back some of the tiers that we've been working through. All right.
So you may recall that in FY twenty-one, as we were developing the budget, we set aside a five million dollar reserve to cover any investment shortfalls that would impact our unfunded actuarial liability. And, you know, as we've been saying, based on our positive budget performance so far, we recommend allocating the five million to our operating budget at this time. And this would increase our total UAL, or unfunded actuarial liability contribution, from thirty-five to forty million for FY twenty-one. That's, that's part of our recommendation for the evening.
Hang on just one second there, because this came up at Finance Committee, I want to make sure it's understood. This five million was budgeted, it's not part of, it wouldn't roll back out of the twelve point two that we were just talking about. So what we had done in our tier, so do you have a slide that has the tiers?
Sure.
Thanks, Steve. There you go, perfect. All right. What we were looking at in these tier system, if you recall, we basically started cuts in one, two, three, you know, in order. And you can see in tier five, that two point three number right down there. We stopped at tier five, we didn't need to get into tier six. I will say that I've always, I've always believed that there's basically a tier five and a half, because that tier five and a half would have included the five million dollar pension that we were just talking about. Because there, I think it would have been a fair policy question whether to send that five million dollars toward the pension toward our, toward a pension pay to our, excuse me, ADP, man, I'm sorry, additional discretionary payment, whether we would send in an additional discretionary payment or actually initiate service level cuts. Fortunately, we never reached that point. We're now actually rolling back because of the surplus. And I caution using the word surplus, it is technically the right word to use, but it's not the same surplus as we've seen in past years where you know that, you know, we can anticipate steady revenue growth and whatnot. That twelve point two came because of drastic cuts, you know, we're seeing in the first four tiers here that would normally never have been cut. And then we also got, you know, we didn't get lucky, but we got, you know, fortunate that more revenue came in than anticipated on year-end. And then as we've gone into quarter one, same, but look, we just got shut down again, not entirely. It's a very different shutdown than we saw in March or April. But with the widespread transmission that you're seeing in LA County and, you know, the cuts that they're talking about making, and, you know, the changes we're seeing out of the state of California weekly these days, it's worth just remembering that it's not the same, that surplus term is not the same term that we would normally be using in other years simply because of our fairly conservative strategy here. So I did want to point out, if you could go back to that slide with the pension. So the reason I wanted to point this out is because that was budgeted, it is an anticipated expense, but we set it aside with the idea that we would actually have a discussion at this meeting among council to decide whether to actually fund it or whether to pull it back into the general fund and use it towards something else. And so that's why it's important to remember the timing of what we've done with this particular money and why it's coming back to council for the decision now. And I agree with this recommendation, but it's important to understand that it's not part of that surplus, it's actually already budgeted. We just need to make the decision on whether to send it in.
I just ask a question.
Yeah, Ms. Dixon.
To clarify, thank you, Mayor. This is not our additional payment that we make annually, is it? The five million?
It's, it's kind of an additional, additional. So the, so we, I know that's, so we have a normal cost, which is the amount that we need to pay for regular employees. We have the unfunded pension obligation default amount, which is what we pay. We, as a city, as you know, we make the additional discretionary payments to pay down existing obligations. This addition, this five million is in anticipation that PERS will not be making the, will not be hitting the investment results that they would otherwise be needing to make, which is that seven percent annual. We do not, as a, I think, as a matter of policy, our city has decided that they're not going to hit that, which we've been right.
Right.
But we're also, because we've made that policy choice, we've, we've said, look, when we have the cash to do so, we'll continue to get out ahead of it the way that we've.
Are we doing that or are we not?
That's what the recommendation is. This five million is that forward-looking additional.
But I guess to transfer the five million from the PERS, set aside to the operating budget so we could continue to fund it?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Yes. Yeah, we're not, it is not a pullback to put a shpeck and then not send to PERS.
I just wanted to emphasize that. As long as I have the microphone, yeah, just a quick question. On the revenue side, I don't think we've ever. On the, on the revenue side, I don't think we've ever seen it, maybe even ever, a decline in property taxes, but your staff report says that it's really related to the forgiveness of interest and other payments from the state that it mandated under COVID. Is that what that is, about why we have a 14% decline? It's not because of assessed valuations?
No, in fact, excuse me, that's largely due to our supplemental taxes, which were coming in, the first few payments came in lower than the prior year, but since November has come around, we're actually higher than we were last year. So you might consider it just a lag in payments.
Okay.
Nothing to be concerned about.
We usually don't see a decline in property tax revenue. Well, I know that there's been, just to be clear for the record, there's no decline in assessed value, because we haven't even seen those evaluations yet for another year, I guess. But in any event, this is just some transfer payment.
It's just point in time, first three months of the year, you know, that, property tax actually lags quite a bit. So we're seeing some pretty, in November, we've seen some positive income or revenue from property tax, actually.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, let's keep going.
Mayor, you already covered tier five, so I'll just go straight to tier four and kind of give you a description of that. So with tier four, excuse me, focused on transfers in totaling 4.5 million from internal service funds to backfill the general fund revenue shortfall, we propose to return 500,000 to the equipment replacement fund to improve that fund's reserve status. So that's the second recommendation. You'll see that highlighted in red as part of tier four. The remaining tiers, one through three, relied on deferred capital, temporary hiring freeze, and various operating reductions. We're proposing no restorations at this time, because I know we're by no means out of the woods. We still have the potential of needing to make structural adjustments should COVID get worse or anything can happen. So we're just kind of keeping the course, staying steady for the moment. So to conclude, we will continue to monitor the budget performance in subsequent quarters. We'll be reporting that back out to you in, you know, in the coming months, and we'll be making adjustments as needed. We also propose a budget amendment to restore the items mentioned in the previous slides, and as summarized here again, be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have an idea of how short CalPERS is going to wind up?
Would you like to?
I, just because we just gave a PERS presentation at the Finance Committee, so it's fresh in my mind. So we do know, and as you recall, the challenging thing with PERS is the numbers come, and then it's two years later when we actually see the effect, just the way that they, they work their numbers through. But we do know in this 1920 fiscal year that just ended, so June 30th of 2020, they came in at 4.7% investment return, where their, obviously their assumed rate is 7%. So there's that differential.
What would that mean dollar-wise?
So for us, for that one time hit, we calculated about 16 million more on our unfunded liability, which is why this is very critical, this additional $5 million.
Right.
Is we're starting to pay it now, because actually when it goes into effect, most agencies aren't going to have to start paying against it. The contribution rate doesn't change for actually two and a half years down the line. But we're already starting now by putting these additional payments in.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. So if that trend continues by the time that two and a half year mark hits, we might take care of that issue.
We won't take care of all of it, but we, but we will take care of a sizable piece of it. And plus, to the extent you have an unfunded liability, they kind of charge you 7% against that too, right? So we're reducing from that end too. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, they charge you for the two years that you're not paying because they haven't invoiced you for it yet. Yeah. All right, we'll go out to a public comment on this at this time. Do we have any public comment from the community room? Quiet community room. All right, do we have any calls? All right, let's bring it back. So I think in this, it's, it's just, it's a good reminder that, yes, we're doing well through Q1. I'm concerned about Q2. Yet again, you know, we talked during study session about how important it is to shop local for our environment, and it is so important this year that we shop local for our economy, for our local economy, for our local businesses. Just remember, you know, every time you're spending money in a local shop, the sales tax stays here. And when the sales tax stays here, that goes to fund all of the amenities that come to, come to bear on, you know, the quality of life we have in Newport Beach. So not only are you helping local shop owners, but you're also making sure the quality of life here in Newport Beach is important. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve staff recommendation. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Dixon. Seeing no discussion, let's go ahead and take a vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Great. On item number 20, we spent a significant amount of time on this during study session. I'm going to remind everyone of what my recommendation is going to be coming out of that study session discussion, which is if you look at the, if you look at the staff recommendation, we have an option of B1, B2, or B3. And my recommendation is going to be B1, but with a caveat that we bring back the issue of a contract with CRNR or RFP by the second meeting in January. So I'm just going to remind everyone that that was, that's going to be my recommendation coming out of our study session. So anyway.
Is that a motion?
It's not. No, it's not. But it's, but I just wanted to prep everyone. Did anyone have any questions or comments on this item before we go to public comment?
Yeah, just one quick one.
Yep, Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. Mr. Harp, is this, this extension still within the original time period, contemplating when we entered the first RFP with them?
Yeah, so the contract provides that we can extend it in this manner.
So it's not a, quote, no big contract?
Oh, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Right. All right, seeing no further, we'll go to public comment. Do we have any public comment in the community room first? All right, do we have any calls? All right, let's bring it back. All right, since I'm asking for a little bit more of a nuanced, I'm understanding I'm going to make the motion here. I move staff recommendation A, and then B1 with a caveat that we bring back at the second meeting in January, either a, either terms of, with, with CRNR for a new set of contracts, I'm sorry, a contract to subsume other contracts, or that we go out to RFP at that time.
I second.
Second by Ms. Dixon. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Right. All right, at this time, we'll go to item number 21, the coronavirus update.
I have a quick update, and we'll also have Chief Boyle speaking a little bit too here. We know the, the tier system, painfully so, I think, right now. And I think one of the main things we're really looking at, this shows you on a statewide basis, cases, some of the other stats from the beginning of October till about now. And you can see the, those deep increases in the very recent weeks. And that's essentially, we're dealing with this, which many people are calling the, the third surge here. And this is very much what the governor is looking at in his actions. On our county level, you can also see that we are also trending upward. We had a pretty good run of some steady rates, but you can see the, particularly these last two weeks, that case per 100,000 really moved us into that purple tier starting last week, and that number is continuing to grow. And that's pretty challenging. And that positivity rate, which actually was pretty good, you can see a few weeks back and actually had us in a much lower tier, has now pulled up considerably. Interestingly, the health equity metric, which looks at the lowest quartile for the county, is actually held somewhat steady for right now. I feel that's an interesting thing to, to see what happens with that as the weeks continue. So looking at that, I will note, though, in Newport Beach, our numbers have been, you know, going up here, you can see the daily cases just got pulled off, I think, today of the 13, but it has been somewhat steady. It's noted here, the last death was 41 days ago. That's a really good thing here for our city. So something to just keep in mind, too, as we look at the numbers. But in reaction to, to the, to the significant increases going on, the state started moving a little quickly. We actually thought the original way to move between the tiers, particularly to move into a worst tier, was they did the seven-day look back and a seven-day, you know, you'd have to be in that worst tier for two weeks worth. So we actually thought we were going to be in the purple tier starting this week. But last Monday, the governor pulled back and said, now we're doing a four-day look back and placing, so we got, Orange County got placed into purple last week, which the primary thing for, for us here was that it reduced the retail capacity, so instead of like 50% occupancy, it went down to 25. Closing indoor dining, that's a big hit, of course, for our restaurants and fitness centers indoors being closed and places of worship. The other thing that the governor put into effect at the end of the week was this, essentially like a curfew for, between 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. as well. That's in effect right now through, through most of December here. For our side, we are watching this very carefully, but we, we are a central service in terms of providing government operations. So our city hall remains open at this time, but we are certainly monitoring the numbers carefully. Our library remains open. It's allowed open at the 25% capacity, so we're maintaining that. We did have to close our Oasis Fitness Center because fitness centers needed, could only be open outdoors, so that didn't work for our Oasis Center there. I will also note, we continue to have our emergency temporary use permit program. That's the program we put together to enable the outdoor dining, and that continues. And we continue to work hard in, in any permits that come into process them very quickly. Currently, we do see things of, that are more like amendments to existing permits, like sometimes looking at changing the hours and that sort of thing. So we do work to process those as rapidly as we can, as well as continue to monitor that businesses are meeting the conditions of those permits. I think this, it's already been well-publicized on this, the chamber canceling the Christmas Boat Parade. And then the other thing I want to bring Chief Boils up to talk a bit about is now that we are looking into the next phases, there's been some promising results of vaccines. So really, the next big effort in this fighting COVID is how vaccines will be distributed and, and implemented. And we think there will be an active role that our fire department can play in that. So I'm going to bring Chief Boils up to speak a little bit to that and maybe also to the temporary use permit as well.
Thank you, Ms. Leung. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Jeff Boils, Fire Chief. I would like to take a quick minute to remind everyone with the recent closures of the restaurants, moving everybody, everybody outdoor with the temperatures dropping, we're going, obviously start seeing some portable gas-fired heaters. So we've been trying to make an effort to, from the city side of things, I know it was in the Stu News, and the fire marshals are, are making a push around the county, to just remind business owners, restaurant owners, that portable gas-fired heaters can only be used outside. They can't be inside of the tented areas or any other type of membrane. They need to be within five, they can't be within five feet of a building, five feet of any combustibles, and five feet of exits. And I know that probably sounds like common sense, but it's always worth noting because fires do start. We're going to see an unprecedented amount of people outside in those type of tents and parking lots. So we really just want to make sure that people are safe about how they're doing that. Going back to the COVID front, the county medical director, as, as, let me back up, as we've seen the positive news coming out from the, the different pharmaceutical companies with the efficacy rates of the vaccines, it looks like they're on the horizon. So we're seeing on the news that perhaps 20 million doses or so could come out before the end of the year, and they'll hit first responders and healthcare workers first. And then there's a tiered system of how they'll be distributed. But when you start thinking in terms of the millions of doses that need to be distributed amongst the rest of the population around the country, it's a pretty heavy lift. That's not like your normal flu vaccination or anything that we've really even seen, for that matter, in this country. So our Orange County Medical Director applied for authorization from the state and then through county public health to add local paramedics to that list of people that can distribute the vaccinations. So people will have options. They can go to CVS, Walgreens, those types of pharmaceutical places, their local doctors, Hoag Hospital, UCI. But I anticipate the appointments and the lines will probably be pretty staggering. And if there are segments of the population that don't want to do that, we're hoping to offer those services here in-house in the city with our own paramedic. So I don't know how that looks exactly yet, but perhaps we do some clinics at Oasis or here in the community center, and people could come here, and we will have the vaccinations seemingly available to us to distribute as well. So we're really excited about that. I think the push will, to be getting it out as soon as December, January, February, in the coming months, that's the only way we're really going to get our arms around this from the herd immunity standpoint, and we're hoping to be part of the solution. And that's, that's the end of my report.
That's great. I can tell everyone, just real quickly on council, I'd reached out to Robert Brithwaite over at Hoag to make sure that we were coordinating as a city with Hoag on this exact issue. So Grace and Chief Boils and I are going to make sure we coordinate probably in the coming weeks with Robert to, to make sure that we're on the same page with Hoag as we move forward on this. It's just fantastic. That's really, that is really good news, Chief.
I do want to say, from the paramedic protocol standpoint, that that's completely unprecedented. And as I use the word staggering, because I'm still trying to wrap my head around it, but our partnership with Hoag, the county public health, the medical director, it's, it will just be an all-hands-on-deck. So I, I need to give them a lot of credit. The county fire chiefs got behind it, and the state authorized the local county medical directors to make the decision on their own. And obviously, Orange County is all in. We pushed in for that. So it's exciting, very exciting.
Yeah, we're, we're going to work really hard to make sure we're taking care of our residents and, you know, on this issue in particular, to make sure they're, you know, we have ready access when, when the time comes. Real quick, Ms. Brenner.
I just thought you were going to mention the letter we got from Hoag telling people to please get their flu vaccine.
Oh, no, but you go ahead, because you're right.
Well, we did get a letter from Hoag, and, and in it, Robert really encouraged everyone to get their flu vaccination, because it would be a double whammy to get the flu and then COVID, or COVID and the flu, it would weaken the immunity. So it, it's really important that we all get our flu vaccination.
Yeah. Chief, that's, that's great. I appreciate that. You don't need to keep standing up here. I want to highlight just a few things to follow up on Grace's point about where we're seeing numbers right now. We're, Newport, look, we're never going to be an island, so just take what I'm about to say with a grain of salt, but Newport has seen a, over the last 30 days, you know, lower case rate number than what your, what our population would otherwise indicate we would be expecting inside the county. So over the last 30 days, Newport's seen, and this is just tracking off the Orange County website, but we've seen an increase of about 200 cases. You can compare that up to some of the other cities around us. You've got Costa Mesa at 445, Huntington at 539, Irvine at 599. And then the outliers admittedly in our, in our county right now, Anaheim, who over the last 30 days has seen an increase of 2,167 cases, and Santa Ana at 2,444 cases. And so if you add up all of the case numbers over the last 30 days and just say, okay, what percentage of that has Newport Beach represented? We're our, sorry, we're at about 1.5% of it. Our population is about 2.7% of the county. So we're, we haven't seen the same level of increase as a lot of the, the community, but that doesn't mean we can't see that. So I just want to caution folks, you know, continue to get tested. There are plenty of locations inside Orange, Newport Beach. I actually got my first test last week. Wasn't super pleasant, but, yeah, it was the nose. But, you know, it was, but it was, if, they are offering over at the Newport Center Urgent Care, same-day PCR, you do have to pay extra for it, but they, they've got same-day, and then they also have rapid tests. And, you know, there are a lot of opportunities to get tested in our community. If you're looking for a free option that'll test both the, for COVID and for the flu, you can. you can go get a reservation through the Orange County website, the Orange County Health website over at the Fairgrounds. The Fairgrounds is a super site, along with Anaheim, over at, gosh, Honda Center. I think it's at the Honda Center. Well, anyway, you can find it. But we've got a couple of super sites through the county. And then the county is also starting to roll out a test-at-home where you can spit into a vial and send it back. So I imagine that won't be quite as fast, but the, the point is that there is a lot of opportunity for testing if you feel it. But I'll just point out, you know, this tier system that the governor's created, if, if that's what we're gonna continue to work off of on openings and closings, Grace showed a slide showing the numbers substantially increasing. I mean, I'll tell you, folks, there are, there, if you look at the zip code maps that came out today, there are multiple zip codes in some of the cities that are hard-hit, showing case rates above 40. And so the idea that we're gonna be rolling back in pretty quickly, it's not gonna happen. And so I just point this out because our businesses are going to be under this purple tier for the foreseeable future, perhaps even through the rest of the year. And so now is the time to make sure that they, if you love a restaurant, or if you love a shop, and you want to see it around in six months from now, you need to go patronize it now and in the next weeks. I'm just begging people, please stop buying off Amazon. Like, just, you know, if you're gonna order something for takeout, go pick it up, and try not to use DoorDash or Uber Eats. They, they do take a pretty substantial cut from the restaurant themselves. So, you know, all these restaurants we've been going to for a long time, and, you know, and ask them for donations to our favorite charity and to our, to our, you know, sports leagues and whatnot. And now is the time to pay them back. So we gotta rally around, we gotta support local, and we gotta really help out our business community, because they're gonna be hurting if we don't. And be safe. That's exactly right. Be well. Follow Hoag's advice. Hoag's fantastic. I mean, they've gotten us through so much. I'm just saying, it is that, is that moment. Anyway, with that, any other comments up here? All right, we'll go out to public comment. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and council members. I'm Steve Rosansky, President and CEO of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce. I thought I would come down and address the council with regard to the boat parade, which was mentioned earlier by Grace in her summary. As many of you know, we issued last week a notice that we would be canceling the boat parade for the 2020 season, and I just wanted to comment on that. As all of you know, the Chamber of Commerce has served as the home and host and organizer of the boat parade for more decades than, you know, I can count. You know, we bill it as this year would have been the 112th Christmas Boat Parade, and it's had different iterations over the years from its start, you know, from one boat going around the harbor with Mr. Scarp on it and a lantern, to, you know, what we saw last year, 90-plus registered boats and hundreds of other boats out in the harbor enjoying the holiday season. And so as we headed into this year with, you know, obviously coronavirus in the background the whole time, you know, we said we're gonna continue with the planning and the scheduling of the event, the organizing of the event, and, but always with the thought that we would reassess as we got closer and saw what, you know, what conditions were. And we started planning for the event back in March and April, and obviously, March and April, we were in lockdown. And so it was quite optimistic at that point that we would even have a parade. Seemed to, things seemed to get better and then worse during the summer, and then they seemed to get better again. So we were hopeful that we could stage the parade in a safe manner for both the residents and the boaters and the visitors to the community. However, you know, as has just been pointed out with the figures that were presented, you know, things have changed rapidly over the last couple of weeks. And so starting last week, I was approached by various members in the community, and I sought out the advice of members in the community, including, you know, Gary Sherwin with the Newport Beach Visitor Bureau. I spoke with you, Mayor O'Neill. I spoke with Grace and several other council members, discussed it with actually even former council members and mayors of the city of Newport Beach, who, you know, have a lot of experience that I, you know, wanted to take advantage of. Other members of our board, the Chamber Board of Directors. And, you know, we came to the conclusion that it was not acceptable to continue to move forward with an event, a five-day event, that literally brings hundreds of thousands of people into our community. You know, you were talking just a minute ago about how low the rates are here in Newport Beach, but much higher in other communities. Well, that's where these people come from. They come from all over the county. They come from LA County, Riverside, and San Bernardino County, which are seeing way higher rates than even we are. Actually, if you go to the Blueprint for a Safer Economy data that was put out today, our coronavirus, you know, cases per 100,000 and our positivity rate here in Orange County are now higher than LA County, which really shocked me. I couldn't believe that, considering, you know, LA County has really been a hotspot. So the numbers are rising. We were seeing triple the number of cases per 100,000 today from what we did two weeks ago. If I could have another couple minutes here? I appreciate it.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. So, you know, the numbers are rising. We made the decision that it was not in the best interest of our residents on Balboa Island, in Balboa Village, Marina Park, all the public docks and other areas where the public tends to congregate during the boat parade, and that there was just no way to control these types of crowds, considering, you know, the, the length and breadth of the city that we're talking about. And, you know, they do tend to crowd up, they bunch up. There's no way to really socially distance adequately. There's no way to ensure that people are gonna wear masks. And, you know, we, we just didn't feel was responsible to have, you know, five consecutive nights of basically super-spreader-type events. And we're talking about an event that's really not gonna happen for another three weeks. Three weeks from today, after we pass through Thanksgiving, I can imagine that we're gonna see significantly higher numbers than we are today. You know, we, we've already, since we announced the end of the parade, the governor's announced a curfew from 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. Dana Point has actually canceled their boat parade. We've, I, I can't remember if it was before or after, but the Restaurant Association has canceled Restaurant Week in January. We, you had a presentation earlier about, from Joy Brenner, Councilwoman Brenner, regarding Christmas Walk, and that they didn't feel that they could have a one-day event that would have brought lots of people down to Corona del Mar and the crowding on the streets. Well, we're talking about a five-day event that has even more crowding than, than Christmas Walk. And so ultimately, we decided it just wasn't our best interest. We, we've canceled the event. We're no longer hosting that event. And so, and part of the reason why I'm here tonight is I'm just a little concerned because in response, we've seen, I've seen at least two other groups that are now advertising a boat parade. And so, you know, despite all the indications and despite all the reservations that we have, which, you know, I guess they can try and do that. I know that we do a significant amount of pre-planning for this event, especially with regard to safety on the water. So not only am I concerned about the issue of what this means for our residents and visitors here from a crowding standpoint, I'm actually getting a little concerned now what this means from a safety-on-the-water standpoint. Because, you know, when we run the parade, we run a number of on-the-water parade marshals. We work closely with the Harbor Patrol, with the Sheriff's Patrol, with the Coast Guard Auxiliary. We, you know, engage Sea Toe to help us clear the boats out of the way. And even with all of that planning, I'll tell you, last year, we had, you know, our lead boat hung up on a mooring line. We had another boat that ran aground on Sandbar. I had reports of other boats, you know, not in, in the parade officially, but boats, spectator boats that.
Steve, you could wrap it up.
Crashed into each other. So clearly, it's, it's, you know, it's this dangerous situation on the water at night. I would be concerned about that certainly, and I would hope that the city would be concerned about that, and that they would look into and advise these groups that are planning these things that they need, you know. There's a lot more than just showing up on the water and running a bunch of boats around the harbor. So thank you for the extra time. If you have any questions, you know where to find me, and thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other public comments in the, you know, do we have any public comments by phone? All right, we'll bring it back up. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. Yeah, I, thank you, Steve, for that. I understand the chamber had its reasons. The overwhelming support for the push to keep the boat parade going, to me, has been unbelievable. So many people appreciate this parade. Obviously, it was started by a couple of families over 100 years ago. And I spoke to one member of one of those families who was very happy to see it go through. It doesn't always have to be as large and as orchestrated. Smaller is fine, and Newport Beach and Company, other entities, don't have to advertise if they don't want to, so we don't have to worry about the crowds being as large. But at the end of the day, if you're concerned about this, you have the ability to stay home or take precautions. I believe that this is a moment for us to exercise our freedom and what is for many the most joyous time of the year, and what has been for a lot, a lot of other folks the toughest year they've ever faced. So that's why it's so important to me. The boaters on the harbor are gonna be just fine, experienced boaters who've been doing a lot in the water for a lot of years. Doesn't necessarily require the same organizational setup if it's gonna be smaller, but if it is gonna be large, I think people know how to, to navigate this harbor pretty well. So at the end of the day, it is my hope that those who do go, do it safely and respectfully. It'll be on the restaurants and other operators to ensure their own protocols on their locations. It'll be, most importantly, on individuals to enjoy a celebration that we have experienced for over 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Avery.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Muldoon, and I also commend Steve. He did the right thing, because he represents a large organization, Chamber of Commerce, and he did what he had to do. But I do believe there will be boats out there, and I just hope everybody's safe and people are careful. But this is a time for people to really be careful about their decisions and what they're gonna do, what they're comfortable with, because there will be crowds regardless, and not as big as if we were actually holding the parade. But, you know, the harbor's always been one of those places. We, we've managed to get through this without, unlike San Diego, without denying people the ability to get on the water and enjoy their boats as people enjoy the beach. These are important things. But people just have to behave responsibly, and sometimes we see on the harbor they don't. But that's something that we really can't control unless they're, you know, threatening other people, so. But I think for the most part, people will be respectful and will get through it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no others, we'll go into next item, motion for reconsideration. Madam Clerk.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
All right, seeing no such motions, I will wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving, and we are adjourned.